Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for April 24th to order. We'll just moment here. They'll have a roll call.
Okay, Counselor Kaiser.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy, additions, deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the additions to the agenda and also that, second here, get this wording right, I also move to have the staff presentation regarding 3.3A, move to 1.4 for presentation.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, any council comments? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Monday night, I was absent from Budget Committee. I passed my ham license test.
Congratulations.
And I see one of my fellow ham testers right there. We finished first and took care of business. So, still waiting for the FCC to post my name in their database so that I actually have a number.
Counselor McCoy.
I want to make sure that was the radio, not just his general.
The general ham thing. Counselor Anderson.
He doesn't need a license for that. Takes one to know one. I just want to talk for a minute about the police station bond because I've seen the voter's pamphlet that came out that did not have my name. The council signed it. The entire council, except for me, had their signatures in the voter's pamphlet endorsing the bond. And I just want to establish that I am in favor of the bond. I actually have a sign on my lawn. And I discovered in talking with the people who did this that I also, well, I didn't discover this, I also am a trial lawyer and I had a trial lasting over three weeks in Portland and I was up in Portland much of that time and the time the signatures were needed to be gathered, I wasn't in town. So, I just want to state that I am in favor of the bond and I wish my name would have been on the ballot measure that went out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Any other? Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that this coming Sunday, the Salem Bicycle Club will be hosting the 41st Annual Monster Cookie Bike Ride. Salem Bicycle Club has been in existence since 1969 and is a great asset to our community. So, if you're so inclined, please join us down at the Capitol Mall at 8:00 AM Sunday morning for a nice 62-mile bike ride up to Shempuig and back. There are monster cookies along the way at milepost 15, milepost 30, milepost 45, and then again back at the Capitol. It proves to be a great day and it's a great fundraiser for the Salem Bicycle Club. And we use the money that we raise to support Boys and Girls Club cycling efforts, helmets, various projects around the community to support cycling.
Great. Thank you very much. Any others? I have one I want to mention. We will have a soft opening, whatever that means, but a soft opening of the new Peter Courtney Minto Island Bridge. We'll have a walk across with Senator Courtney on Thursday morning and then Friday morning it will be open to the public, we hope, as soon as the park opens. So, you can start using the Minto Island Bridge at that point.
May what time?
Finally. Well, I think they're still determining what the time exactly will be on Friday morning. I've just got this feeling. Do you know?
I don't. We can certainly go get that information to you.
Does anyone know when that bridge is going to finally open?
Mayor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The handrails are in, they're stringing the wire that goes underneath the handrails to make it safe and they're just stringing as fast as they can and we expect that they'll be done Wednesday or Thursday. So, Friday morning, when the park opens, the bridge should be open.
What time's the park open?
I think when the sun rises.
We will get the exact time out to the council and to the public for the Friday event.
Great, okay. Well, that's a long anticipated event, so we're really looking forward to it. Great. Anything else? Okay? Proclamations. We have one this evening. We have a proclamation honoring the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Apano. I'd like to invite up, if they're here, Jaclyn Lung, Dexter Molaputo, May Uve Molaputo, Uriah Molaputo, Lucida Motaputo, Palina, Palina, I'm not sure, I apologize, Perman, Mike Barong, Simeon Jacob, Joe Enlet, Leah Perman, Robert Anjan, Janelia Legina Capell, Nikita Capell, Bethany Capell, Capella Capell, Exodus Capell, Malo Kamanta, Kumuh Rez, Tasi Keener, and Craig Keener. These are all representatives from Apano as well as Compact Free Association Alliance National Network and the Oregon Marshallese Community. Very pleased to have you here this evening. And everybody's here. And I apologize if I mispronounced any of your names. Whereas, following the 1990 passage of an amendment to a joint resolution of Congress, President George H.W. Bush declared the month of May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, noting the significant contributions in science, commerce, education, and the arts made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have demonstrated their dedication to ideals upon which the United States was founded and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideals throughout the world. And whereas, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community. And whereas, we recognize Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders whose love of family and community have helped to sustain our city, particularly through the commitment of the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Apano. Whereas, the city of Salem is grateful to the members and advisors of the Mayor's International Council who highlight the heritage of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and ask that the community join me in this special tribute to celebrate the contribution of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders dated this 24th day of April, signed Chuck Bennett, Mayor.
Just wanted to say a quick thank you and hello and look forward to seeing you at some of the events that we're going to be holding in month of May. We have a large group of supporters here and we'd love to see you. We have the Oregon Marshallese Community, they, at the end of the month, they have, oh, end of May, they have an event coming up. We also have with the state of Oregon, an event on May 20th at the Capitol. We also have with, they're not here today, but we have at Chameca Community College on May 17th, an event over there with their Mixnesean group at 4:30. And, I mean, we'll be posting these events and sharing them with you, with the mayor's office, and hopefully we get to see some, or if not all, of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you very much. And congratulations on the month of May. Okay, we'll move to item 1.4, presentations. We are going to move forward then, item 3.3A. I'm going to call up, I guess.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Bennett, Dan Atchison, the city attorney, will speak to the item. Thank you, counsel, for modifying your agenda, given the interest in this topic and the questions and comments that had been coming in once the council agenda was published. In talking with the mayor this morning, we thought that having some staff presentation of the intergovernmental agreement before public comment would allow for some sharing of what the intergovernmental agreement is, what it's not, and with the anticipation that there would be other issues this evening that would perhaps take time, such as the transportation network public hearing, we thought it would also allow for a more smooth, I guess, public comment period, so you would have an opportunity to know as people provided comment on the item, again, what the IGA is and what it isn't. And, again, we thank you for your modifying your normal agenda flow.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I presume it'll be like the standard practice then. We'll get the staff report, we'll get the testimony, and then when it comes to item five point, whatever it is, number five, that we can then ask questions to staff.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Second, correct?
Yes, or.
Or, I had another thought. Let me try this one out on you. I was thinking we might just do 3.3A as part of the action items rather than a consent item, so that we can act. So, these folks, if they would rather not spend the evening with us, would be able to see the action on it and would that be?
That's fine, but the procedure will be staff report, any testimony, then questions.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And Mr. Atchison will start off the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Dan Atchison, city attorney. Item 3.3A is a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of Salem and DLCD. The agreement is a result of a series of meetings between DLCD and city staff that occurred when DLCD filed a notice of intent to appeal the city's, city council's December 2016 decision to expand the Salem's urban growth boundary in West Salem near the Willamette River. As a result of those meetings, DLCD and staff were able to agree to an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that resulted in DLCD withdrawing its appeal from Luba and this agreement, which is before you for your consideration tonight. First off, I'd like to thank DLCD staff, I see Matt Crawl in the audience tonight, and Director Roux for all their hard work through this process. This was over the winter, we had a lot of snow events, and so it was somewhat of a challenge to get together at times. I also want to thank them for their willingness to work with the city in good faith, which resulted in the proposed agreement. While the initial basis of this agreement was in response to DLCD's appeal, the content of the agreement addresses broader mutual policy objectives that may form the basis of a more collaborative relationship between the city and DLCD. Staff's recommendation is that council approve the agreement. The agreement has six different elements. The first element is project phasing. Essentially, the city would concentrate only on a first phase of the Salem River Crossing Project until 2030. The first phase essentially is a single-span, two-way bridge, Marine Drive and Hope Avenue improvements, all with bicycle and pedestrian facilities. More importantly, the first phase does not include additional lanes or bridge spans, elevated ramps, or any new connections to Highway 22. The second element is congestion pricing analysis. This element of the agreement does not commit the city to employ tolling or any congestion pricing, and I'll let Public Works explain what congestion pricing means, on the new bridge, only that it be included as part of the analysis in the city's funding strategy. It expressly does not commit the city to study or include tolling or congestion pricing on the existing bridges. The third element is increased densities, residential densities, and mixed use in the city's core. The city and the Urban Renewal Agency both have adopted policies encouraging increased residential densities and mixed use development in the city's core. This element essentially requires the city to continue to pursue those policies. Under the agreement, the city will identify current projects in the urban renewal plans and the city's plans that enhance increased residential densities in the core, as well as the mixed use piece, and look at plan policies in the future for encouraging future development. The fourth element is transit service. Under the agreement, the city will work actively with the Transit District to identify potential transportation improvements in the city's transportation system, as well as potential code amendments that will enable better transit service. It does not obligate the city to adopt any particular code amendment or other change, nor does it contemplate that the city would provide funding to the Transit District. The fifth element is pedestrian and bicycle projects to be included in the next transportation bond. Historically, pedestrian and bicycle projects have been a significant portion of the city's transportation bonds, and allocating a minimum of 20% as required in the IGA of the next transportation bond for these projects is both consistent with our past practice and consistent with the city's approved transportation system plan. The last element of the IGA is a reporting requirement. The city will provide reports concerning these obligations that are listed above. We will provide it to both council and DLCD. DLCD will have an opportunity to respond to the information we provide and engage the city in discussion regarding the results and conclusions from those reports. Specifically, the city will report on the city's progress in meeting benchmarks that are adopted in the city's comprehensive plan related to increasing transportation choices. The results of that report will determine whether the city needs to update its benchmarks or identify new measures. In the event that changes are needed, the city and DLCD will work together to develop these new measures and city staff will present them to council for your consideration. And Public Works is available to address any of the substantive aspects of the agreement as it relates to the transportation plan and the third bridge. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the public. So, we're going to move into public comment. I'll remind you, we allow three minutes per presentation. When the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left. When the red light goes on, please stop talking, or I will have to interrupt you. I just, and I don't like to be that rude, so it makes it really easy if you just finish your sentence and stop, stop at three minutes, please. So, we're going to do, I'm going to call up the folks who've signed up for 3.3A. And if you'd pull that mic down, there you go. Thank you.
So, Mayor and members of city council, my name is Sarah Doimling.
Sorry.
I have a residence in Ward Eight and own a forest products company in Polk County. I'm one of the eight citizens who've appealed the December 5th land use decisions to advance the third bridge. First of all, I'd like everyone to stand up who opposes the third bridge, fast, so I have time to talk. Thank you. I have been asked to testify on behalf of these folks and many others who aren't here tonight, to urge you to reject the staff recommendation and to approve, the staff recommendation to approve the IGA with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It's been 11, by the way, this is interjected. I think everything in that IGA is self-evident and you wouldn't need an IGA for it. Seems like it's all there already. It has now been 11 years since the Salem River Crossing began. Nearly 8 million has been spent on consulting costs alone through the end of 2016, and millions more on staff time. The planning project has been a repeated failure, but it refuses to die. It has no viable funding plan as of now. When the Columbia River Crossing failed to come up with a viable funding plan in 2013, elected officials did the right thing and pulled the plug. Unfortunately, this hasn't happened yet in Salem. Now you have in front of you an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement that reduces the width of the bridge to two lanes, but it does not reduce the length of the bridge. It must still fly over Front Street, cross the eastern channel of the Willamette, plant itself in a heron rookery on McLean Island, cross the western channel of the Willamette, then cross a 75-acre lake, a former gravel pit that is 50 feet deep, and finally plow through the River Valley subdivision where it will destroy a dozen homes before landing in West Salem. The length of this bridge and the difficulty of construction in an earthquake liquefaction zone will surely make it one of the most expensive two-lane bridges ever built in Oregon. And what purpose will it serve? The purpose of the Salem River Crossing Project was supposed to be to reduce congestion levels on the existing bridgeheads. But will this plan do that? Will downtown commuters drive a mile north and 3/4 of a mile west on a two-lane bridge to get home from work? And will they be willing to pay the suggested congestion pricing in the IGA? What is congestion pricing? It's tolls, as far as we know. And if you vote for this, you are voted to build the only urban toll bridge in the state of Oregon. Is that what your constituents want? Let's start to end this fiasco tonight. I beg you, I encourage you, I urge you to vote no on the IGA and to reconsider your land use actions to advance the Salem River Crossing Project.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Brian Hines.
So, Brian Hines, 10371 Lake Drive, Salem. I also am opposed to approval of the MOU. And in the spirit of the Salem March for Science, it was a great event last weekend, I want to bring up seven facts about this project that have been kind of ignored by the city and the Salem Council up till now. We've heard that, yes, the MOU requires congestion pricing. We've just heard that congestion pricing is another word for tolling. So, a vote for the MOU is a vote to move ahead with tolling. We know that it is tolling because the Salem River Crossing, FAQs, frequently asked question says congestion pricing is a way to use tolls to manage congestion. So, those are, those are my first two facts. Fact three, though, is that the city of Salem has been repeatedly telling people that tolling isn't being considered. There's a Facebook post on February 10th that said congestion pricing is not being considered now and will not be considered for Salem's existing Willamette River bridges. So, this obviously isn't true. We, other, many of us contest this. Obviously, it's being considered because you have an MOU that says you must consider congestion pricing. And this was in, had already been signed by the city manager. At the time, the city manager and others told us that congestion pricing wasn't being considered. So, that's fact three. Fact four is that Mayor Bennett also said in a Facebook post that was shared, "I want to assure you, there's no intention at all to impose tolls on Salem bridges, that's just misinformation." So, that isn't true either. No third bridge has been effective in showing us the funding strategy for the Salem River Crossing, which includes as its biggest component $175 million in tolls. And those tolls are not just on the new bridge. The frequently asked questions, again, says that tolling is being explored as a way to pay for the project, but does not work if only one bridge is toll. If only the new bridge is toll, many people would choose to existing, the existing bridges instead of the new one. This would result in little improvement to congestion on the existing bridges, since so many, fewer people would use the new toll bridge, not enough money would be generated to pay for it. So, clearly, the plan is to toll the new bridge. If you toll the new bridge, you have to toll the two existing bridges. So, a vote for the MOU is effectively, the logic is here, this is science, this is reason, and this is what gives us the ability to have an honest discussion, is agreeing on these facts, which I think are indisputable, that a vote for the MOU is a vote to toll, to consider, seriously consider tolling, the new bridge and the two existing bridges. And why the city of Salem can't just flat out say, "This is what we're considering," I don't know. Let's just be honest. This is what is being brought before the council, and if you think tolling is popular, go ahead and improve it and see how your reelection chances are, because I know from these people, I've never heard one person in favor of tolling. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Just a quick statement, I don't think anyone in the city of Salem is in favor of tolling. Just as a heads up on that, this says we will analyze it. I don't like it being in there to be analyzed because it just gives somebody information down the road to do something. But I don't think we could find one person in the city who would say, "Yeah, toll one or multiple bridges," so.
Well, Counselor Nanki, I agree with you. I guess my point would be, and direct my attention to the DLCD people here, I wrote them bringing up the fact that the, the MOU is under consideration, that this be considered, and yet the mayor and city staff are saying we're not going to consider it. And it's pretty clear from the, reading the MOU and the DLCD position is that they are favoring congestion pricing along with all these other things. Now, they don't require it, I guess it was as far as the negotiations, but clearly, this is part of an effective way of making a more environmentally friendly bridge. And of course, if you did congestion pricing on the current bridges, you wouldn't need a new bridge because it would reduce demand on the new bridges. So, the whole thing is kind of this little weird chain of logic that nothing, none of it makes sense, because if you do it, people won't use the bridge, and if you don't do it, you can't pay for it. But I agree with you very much.
People who cross the river as well, so.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's not a logical inclusion.
It's unpopular, and I understand the city's desire to keep it as much under the surface as possible, but I'm just trying to bring it up to the surface, as are all these people here.
Well, and for us to waste money to actually pay for the analysis as well.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you. Matt Crawl.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the council. My name is Matt Crawl. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. Mr. Atchison's already covered the content of this agreement, so I won't go through that again. I just really say, want to let everyone know the appreciation we had for working with your staff on this, and that was with Mr. Atchison and Peter Fernandez and Julie Warnakee. We also had some assistance from the Regional Solution Team, James Labarre, and some folks from ODOT, Terry Cole and Dan Freke, helping us out on that. Obviously, we started this from a position of some disagreement and conflict, so it was really very nice to see how well things worked out and we were able to have these discussions and come to the conclusion of this IGA that you have before you tonight. And I also would echo Mr. Atchison's comments that while we started from that, that issue, what we have here is a broader base for an ongoing collaboration to work on these very important issues with transportation and land use, looking ahead for future Salem. That's it for what I need to say to you now, unless there's any questions from anybody here.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Call. Thanks for coming down. There was an earlier memorandum of understanding that at one point was indicated it might have been on the agenda for our February 13th meeting, and for understandable reasons, that didn't happen, but it looks to me like that agreement and the agreement memorandum of understanding we see tonight has changed somewhat. For example, in number one, in tonight's agreement, project phasing, the first one said, in the agreement, the first memorandum said, "City shall adopt a policy." And the project phasing now says the city will only design and construct the first phase of the project until January of 2030. So, do you have any idea why that language was changed between February 13th and now?
So, the, that original document referring to was a memorandum of understanding that was done fairly quickly and in some cases sort of broad, with the understanding always that it would be, it would be followed up with a refined version.
Where does it say that in the memorandum of understanding? Where is it that it say there's an understanding that something could happen, something else could be changed?
I don't have the copy of the MOU in front of me right now. I think that towards the end of it, it talks about preparing an IGA, which is why we're here tonight with this IGA. But to your broader question, what I would say this is that staying, that you shall adopt a policy is a statement of something that you intend to do in the future. By adopting this IGA, you are in fact doing that, because this IGA is an agreement and once signed, it is that policy that the MOU talked about doing in the future.
Then, in the original agreement, the, number two, it says the city will include congested pricing model as part of the project funding strategy, and the new agreement says the city will include an analysis of congestion pricing. What's, why was that changed?
My understanding that that, that the idea of analyzing it as part of the strategy was always the intent in there, and that, that the MOU was not intended to take away the power of the city council to make the decisions about actually tolling, but was talking about analyzing them and considering them. And so, in the IGA, we're a little more careful and a little more precise with the language to make that clear, what was. to make that clear, what was going on.
And do you agree that congestion pricing is tolling?
Yes.
And we're going to be later on talking about Uber, and they have transportation network committees, and they have surge pricing. So would it be fair to say congestion pricing might also be considered surge tolling? Congestion toll?
That seems like a reasonable way of describing it.
Okay. Then, the items in the agreement, three, increase residential densities, four, work with the transit district, five, allocate 20% of bond to pedestrian and bicycle. Those are things that the city could do independently without reference to this MOU slash IGA. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Those are within the discretion of the.
Then, I'm sort of curious as to why else, excuse me, DLCD originally joined the appeal. Were all the reasons you joined the appeal reasons that are discussed here in the facts and findings? I mean, first one is the phasing, second one is congestion pricing, and then the next ones are things that the city could already do and has already done.
The items that were the basis for our appeal really are addressed probably more in the section six and seven, talking about some of the reports and some of the data and some of the additional findings.
So are you saying there weren't enough reports in the findings that were already made as, after the decision was made?
There was a, really a large volume, and I think it was going to help us here is to try to find what's in there and find the parts.
So for example, if 3,500 pages were part of that large volume, and there was only a week to consider that, would that cause a concern to you as an administrator?
That's a lot to absorb in one week. That was not the substance of our.
And would you say one could meaningfully absorb that and then meaningfully participate in any decision?
That would be difficult.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I just, if Matt needed help addressing those, but I think he did a great job.
Okay. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, just one question. I'm not sure whether the department has been involved with monitoring the situation or not, but of those 3,500 pages, how many of those would you say, if you have been monitoring it, of those 3,500 pages, how many would you say were brand-new in that last 10 days?
We did not monitor that at all. I couldn't hazard a guess.
I'll ask staff.
Counselor Cook.
Hi, Matt. It was nice to see you today. Just full disclosure, I know Matt. So could you talk a little bit about the goal of the Department of Land Conservation and Development and what your goal is through work strategically and how it relates to this project?
Certainly. Department of Land Conservation and Development operates under 19 statewide planning goals that set out the overall way that local governments then make their local plans to meet those, one of which is Goal 12 that addresses transportation. And when it comes specifically to cities like Salem, which is obviously one of the larger cities in Oregon and in the areas that are labeled as metropolitan, really the operative phrase we're looking there is transportation plans that increase transportation choices. You've got really a great opportunity in Salem to have a wide range of choices, from driving, taking a bus, riding a bike, walking, there's probably several others I'm not even thinking of, skateboards, whatever, whatever works, just that wide variety of transportation choices. And we think it's very important that both the land use planning and the transportation planning be designed to support that. So that's, those are the goals that are really laid out, and that's laid out in the transportation planning rules, which implement that Goal 12, the statewide planning goal.
Thanks, Matt.
Counselor Neckey.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down. Congestion pricing, is that DLCD's issue to have that included in the MOU slash IGA, or who wants it and why?
That came out of discussions between the different staff, that that would be a useful way to help look at this project.
Do you know of any facility or jurisdiction in the state of Oregon that actually implements congestion pricing? I know there's two private, the last time I saw about a half a year ago, but nobody's tolling anything.
There are some bridges across the Columbia River that do have a toll on them, but I'm not aware that they have any congestion pricing or change prices at different times of the day.
Okay, and I see your piece on that, as far as just tolling in general versus changing the toll for congestion pricing versus just tolling in and of itself. So are there any other agreements with other cities that say they'll look at congestion pricing as well?
No, we don't have any other IGAs related to that.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor McCoy.
Follow up a little bit on Counsel Anderson's questioning. My question would be, it seems to me, from what I understand, that the first draft of the plan was just that a draft, and the last two months have been spent negotiations between the two staffs negotiating this final agreement. Was there back and forth and disagreements and some things dealt with in that? Give us a feel for what happened in these meetings as you move forward.
Well, the initial was a memorandum of understanding, which is a less formal sort of a document that just is expressed as what we were interested in proceeding with, and so this becomes a more formal document here as an IGA. Yes, we met several times. James LeBarre from the Regional Solutions Team was facilitating those. We met both several times here at this office and then at our offices, and talked through a lot of this. At times, we just put the whole document right up on the screen and then could talk through different ideas about, well, how do we phrase this and what do we mean and how to be clear? When I read that, I read something different than you read it, so let's keep working on it till we all read the same thing on that.
So it's fair to say then that the final document's different from the initial document because of those discussions, agreement, negotiations?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yes.
Sorry, thanks. One of the, the current one says that it will be built in phases, and it'll, in phase one, it'd be a two-lane bridge. Doesn't the first phase of a project, if a project like this is phased out, doesn't that have to have independent utility in and of itself?
Certainly, that sounds like a wise thing, but I'm not sure if you're referring to a specific legal requirement.
I am. Doesn't land use planning require that there be independent utility if you're going to, of the first phase, if you're going to be building something in phases?
I'm not aware of the specific.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You are.
That's the last person signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Yes.
Mary Ann Backlowski, 385 Forest Hills Way, West Salem. I've heard that everybody in this room seems to be against tolling the bridge. But that leaves me with the question that I haven't heard answered. How does the city intend to pay for this bridge if it's not using tolls? The state of Oregon doesn't have the money. I don't see any, I haven't heard that the federal government has the money. How does the city of Salem intend to pay for this bridge?
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Doug?
I have a question of the staff. I travel in Europe a lot.
You're going to have to just testify, Doug. You can offer a rhetorical question, we'll try to get it to staff for you.
I'm Doug Smith from 820 Fairview Avenue.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
You can ask it, but staff won't answer it right now.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I travel in London, in Europe a lot, and I travel to London. London has a congestion charge. If you travel in a private vehicle in the inner city of London, you have to pay a congestion charge. My question is, does the city of Salem plan to have a congested charge where you have to pay in downtown Salem to drive your private vehicle?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have any questions for staff? Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, the referred to 3,500 pages of information, it's my sense that that came to us over time and that it was finished up, but there weren't 3,500 pages of unseen information thrown at us at the last minute. Could somebody respond to that?
Good evening, Julie Warnicki, Transportation Planning Manager. I have to admit, I haven't counted pages, but I would say that the vast majority of the material that was provided had been previously presented, you know, through the process. So I would concur with your conclusion.
Through the process, you mean during the past 10 years?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess even looking longer, the past 40 years we've been working on this thing? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. I came on the council two years ago, and nothing, I guess, I'll ask a question with the preface, I don't recall anything coming to the council during the year and 10 months I was on the council concerning the, the bridge and the 3,500 pages until a week before the meeting. Are you saying that during the, the term of me being on the council, that all this information was presented to the council?
No, I'm not saying that. The material was developed through the ODOT and Federal Highway process for the environmental impact statement. What occurred shortly before the public hearing was a lot of things were brought together into one place in order to support findings. They were not necessarily new things.
So it sounds like all the material presented was material that was passed back and forth among various staff, staffs at the staff level and not given to the council until the week before the hearing.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that far, but I can't speak to specifics.
Any further questions for staff? Counselor Neckey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like the congestion pricing got into the MOU, IGA in some fashion. It doesn't sound like that was their big issue. If this council were to want to remove that section, what would happen? I mean, it's an IGA, would it be renegotiated?
Dan Atchison, City Attorney, if you wanted to make any changes to the IGA, we could take it back to the DLCD and have a discussion with him about that.
Thanks. Counselor Case.
Thank you. Not sure who to direct the question at exactly, but just, I guess, to help clarify some of the other understanding around tolling and what it might be, one of the questions I've been asked quite a bit is if there's tolling on a third bridge, would there also be tolling on an existing bridge? I've heard different responses to that. I think it might be a good idea to just take the time to clarify if that's even possible, what the city's potentially considering if something were to go forward.
So Counselor, one does not require the other. So there, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, well, yes, that people, people would perhaps choose to travel farther, or travel on a more congested route if another toll was in place. And that's, that's a fair argument, but that doesn't mean that if, if the new crossing is told, that the existing crossings would automatically be told. So I want to be clear that one does not follow the other. And I guess while I'm, while I'm, while I'm answering a question, I'll, I'll fill in some of the blanks on congestion pricing. That was an idea that frankly, we brought to the table for the IGA. We brought it to the table for several reasons. One, one of the issues that the Department of Land Conservation and Development has is reduction of volume, vehicle miles of travel. And so congestion pricing is a way of bringing economics into that discussion. It's being experimented with, it's experimented with in Seattle, so you don't have to go very far to see it in action. It is, it is not yet in the state of Oregon, but I would imagine that someday soon we'll see it, certainly in the Portland metro area. The other reasoning is we have to figure out a way to pay for this thing. So congestion pricing is a way to not only bring the economics to bear, but perhaps figure out a way to at least in part pay for the bridge. We don't have to have, there are tolls, I mean, you're paying for it. I mean, it doesn't matter what you call it. The idea of congestion pricing is that more is charged during the peak hour when there's more demand, perhaps nothing is charged on Sunday, for example. So, so there are these opportunities to, to address that. Modern tolling is not, you drive up to a basket and there's a surly toll taker that, you know, takes a long time to give you your change or anything of the sort. It's all done electronically, either with a transponder or they take a picture of your plate and, and you get a bill in the mail. I just got one the other day for, for my son who was in Portland and, or in Seattle, and got a bill in the mail for his tolls while, while he was there. So, so that's what, that's what congestion pricing is, you know, and that was, those were the ideas behind studying the, the opportunity to, to put it in there. So it's addressing a policy issue and addressing an economic issue.
I have a follow-up. Could you also just briefly explain, because I think there's also some confusion about for existing bridges to put tolling on those bridges? I understand there's some criteria that has to be in place before that's done. Could you just quickly speak to that?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on that, but, but the staff at Federal Highway Administration has, has told us that it is very difficult to do. So, so I'm not sure what, what that would entail, but, but that's not proposed. That's not inherent in the IGA, and that's not inherent in any recommendation that the staff has for you.
Just to clarify two things, just briefly on this congestion pricing, those, the existing bridges are not our bridges, those are ODOT bridges, is that correct?
That is correct. Those are state highways.
So you need to work with the Department of Transportation plus Federal Highway because of the way the funding has worked on those bridges? Is that?
Right. Ultimately, the state government uses federal transportation dollars, and so, so it is a combination. I think, I think the bridges are on the, are on the federal system, so, so, so both entities would have to approve.
And there's a barrier if it's already paid for? I mean, that you, you, tolling is a, is a payment method for a bridge rather than, my understanding is this gets incredibly complicated to the point of being almost impossible to get tolling on existing bridges that exist as long as those two have.
Right.
The other, just to answer Doug's question about contemplation of congestion, similar to London's or New York's, we're not looking at that downtown?
No.
No? Say no.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Because that, that, I just want to make that very clear, because as soon as anything is said about congestion, I know it'll show up in one of the blogs or something, we're looking at downtown congestion. McCoy?
I'm not sure who I address this to, so I'll start with Peter, I guess, but looking at 3.16, and it calls for a report by June 1st of '17 on actual performances in 2015 for adopted performance standards. So just out of curiosity, since that's like a little over a month away, we must have some feel for how many of those standards we've met, if there's any in danger, and what those standards sort of generally might be.
So I think this is a cue for Ms. Warnicki to throw up a slide on, on the screen to show you that. This is work that we've been doing. So it's, it's a little, I apologize, it's a little fuzzy because it's a, I think, Counselor Anderson, even up close, you'll find it very fuzzy, because it is a.
See, I can't tell. I can't tell if that's a slide, it's just my own eyes.
But, but the point of the slide is to show you that, that this is work that, that is ongoing, has been ongoing for a number of years. And so there's already some reporting and some analysis done. So, so, so this is just to, to update the, the reporting. And Julie, I don't know if you want to add something to that?
Well, the measures, benchmarks and measures were initially adopted by council in 2009, and given that the first benchmark year was 2010, the decision was made that it didn't make a lot of sense to do a review of how we were performing with one year's worth of data. And so 2015 was the next benchmark year. We had to. We had to wait until quite a ways into 2016 to get some of the data that was necessary to measure our progress. And so we have done an assessment of most of the measures. There's one that is still outstanding, but we will be bringing that forward, report by June 1. With the exception of one measure, we are, you know, on target or ahead of target with regard to, with regard to the benchmark. And a lot of this is driven by the transit system because a lot of this has to do with development and employment within a certain district of transit, a certain distance from transit. And the transit system has changed substantially since 2009. So it's complicated. We're not here tonight to give you the details on that, but just wanted to let you know. This is in the comprehensive plan. It is the last page of the comprehensive policy plan, which is available on the internet.
Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Fernandez, I wanted to go back to what you said about congestion pricing and the existing bridges. I had understood you in our conversation on Friday, to be quite clear, that tolling on the existing bridges was not an option. But that's not what I think I heard you say tonight. So can you help me with my confusion?
No, that's what you heard me say.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So, but that's not what I heard you say on Friday, so I'm confused.
That tolling on the existing bridges is not an option. That's, yeah, that's, I don't know what else I might have said at our meeting Friday, but...
No, that's what I heard on Friday, but that's not what I thought I just heard you say a minute ago. So that's where I was confused.
Tolling on the existing bridges is not, is not an option. That's not, that's not under consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
One question on this. What is the number three? What's DU?
Dwelling unit.
Thank you. One other question. You also have on 317, Honor Before June 1, 2017, analysis including citations identifying specific evidence, yada, yada, contained to the decision on travel projections, findings. Could you tell me exactly what that all means?
Essentially, that is what Mr. Kral was referring to when he talked about some of the Department of Land Conservation and Development's concerns. This is really having staff, city staff, go through and pull out of the findings certain specific areas where the state was not, didn't know where to look to address certain issues of concern to them. And so we've talked through what those issues are and we're just going to make a brief report to the state on that.
And we'll receive these reports? Yes, no? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Nagy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On two-lane bridge configuration, there's a lot of things that say, and this won't be part of that and this won't be part, will we have to tear it down to build a bigger one later or how will this actually function in an expansion?
Right. So there are several ways to design a structure. The simplest solution with phased approach would be that a future phase, when you needed to go to two lanes in each direction, is that you'd build another structure, just like we have in the existing bridges. So you'd build another bridge. So then you'd have two lanes eastbound and two lanes westbound.
And so that would be the proposed endgame? And if we decided, but if I can go one more.
Yeah.
2030, none of this matters and we can do whatever the heck we want in 13 years?
That's correct. That's correct.
Which some people say may be, you know, half the time before we even do anything.
So this is really, so what the IGA really provides the council is an opportunity to provide, for the council to provide staff with some clear direction. You know, there's some DLCD stuff that is important from a policy standpoint. The other piece of this is clear direction to proceed with something that is reasonable. You know, I, some of the council, I certainly lived through, you know, the original option for A and the year and a half worth of discussions on the council to kind of tame the beast, if you will. And this is a further, this is, I guess, a further refinement of that, that, you know, the EIS certainly provides license for the future work that ultimately may need to be done. Then we've always referred to it as a license, not a requirement. I-5 widenings are, the Kubler widenings are based on an EIS that was done in the 80s. So these things last a very long time. What this does is really give clear direction that we're just going to focus on what is reasonable and what is, you know, remotely affordable. $450 million is not, I mean, I don't know where we would find that kind of money. You know, a first phase is still expensive, but can be worked towards. So it's a reasonable goal towards, moving towards a connection.
Sure. Just to follow up on that, then, as we talked in the past, with a regional transportation facility, there would be federal money, state money. There would be some money that would have to come from us and neighboring jurisdictions because it would be used for, you know, people who live here. If we don't have any connections on a two-lane facility, it's no longer regional, it's a Salem Bridge that doesn't actually help divert any traffic from downtown per se, or it'll just dump onto the streets out there right now that are currently overloaded, so...
The bridge would connect two state highways. It would connect Wallace Road to Commercial and Liberty. So by definition, it would be a regional facility because of that, because of that connection. So the ultimate connections include the ramps and include, you know, the other projects that are needed to make that connection.
Okay.
But that's more expense and that's more, you know, we've got to start somewhere. And so this is where it starts. And by connecting the two state highways, our sense, now, we haven't had, you know, the conversation with ODOT or Federal Highway about funding, you know, because we're not anywhere near that point yet. We're still way back at the EIS point, you know, trying to get that completed and in the land use issues. But that would be our argument that, hey, we're connecting two state highways. It is still congestion relief to downtown because you can still get to that bridge once it's connected to Wallace Road and once it's connected to Liberty and Commercial. So there is a significant relief to the bridges and to downtown.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Again, not sure who to direct this question to, so from what I've been hearing Director Fernandez talk about, the IGA would provide some staff direction that doesn't sound like staff necessarily has right now. My question is, could the council provide the staff direction without this IGA?
I guess I'll take a stab at it. Sure.[1097.12][1097.12](laughter) The IGA is there to sort of show DLCD that the city has a commitment to following what's outlined in there, the phasing, the commitment to increased transportation options. As was alluded to during the testimony, most of this stuff that's in here are things we're already doing and things that you've already committed to as far as the policy basis. I think the IGA is important because I think it really will help foster a relationship that the city hasn't had in the past with DLCD. And frankly, regardless of whether the IGA is approved tonight, we're going to continue to work with them on these items, but I think this IGA is important for that reason.
So essentially, though, it's not necessarily necessary to continue doing these things. Necessarily necessary. You don't have to have it to continue doing these things. Is that correct?
I guess you might want to clarify what these things are, but as far as the plans that are adopted are...
Yeah, four to six things that are included in, like the increased residential densities, mixed-use development, work with the transit district to improve transit service, allocate 20% of the city transportation bond, those types of things. Say you only want to build one span of a two-span bridge.
Majority of those are already adopted council policies through the transportation system plan and other policy documents.
Okay. Then I have a second question, if I may.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, I've been following this process for a long time. I know that there, this was a multi-jurisdictional process. And I'd like to know, how do the other jurisdictions fit into this IGA? Because I know the planning process is multi-jurisdictional and was adopted by a multi-jurisdictional body. And I'm wondering how this other entity will abide by this agreement or if we even have the authority to say, this is what we're going to be doing.
The agreement's fairly specific that it requires the city to do certain things. It's not requiring Polk County or Kaiser or ODOT to do certain things. So on that basis, there is no legal nexus to require another jurisdiction to take any action under the IGA.
So if Marion County or Polk County, for example, said, we don't want to build one span of the bridge, we want to build it all right now, would we be under obligation to do that or because we're under this agreement with DLCD, we would be prohibited from doing that?
That's a good question. I don't, I think because we've committed, if we approve the IGA, or if you approve the IGA, you'd be committing the city to a single phase for the initial period. I think we'd have to have that discussion with the other jurisdictions.
We'd essentially be driving that process, then, for the other jurisdictions.
Yes, has been the case.
Thank you.
I will tell you, just from my own, and I'd be glad to enter it into the record, I received an email earlier today from the mayor of Dallas to asking me to let you know they have voted multiple times, 9-0, in favor of Third Bridge. They're in favor of this. They're in favor of having a bridge that connects across the river at the north end. Haven't had a chance to talk to Commissioner Pope yet, but he has indicated, he hasn't grabbed him yet and said, I'm against this thing and we've certainly publicized it. Counselor Anderson.
Julie, it's my understanding that if the first phase of a project of this nature in and of itself has to have independent utility. In other words, it has to be able to stand alone. Is that true?
Through the, you know, environmental process, the National Environmental Policy Act and working with Federal Highway Administration, you do need to have something that has independent utility. So you can't build a bridge to McLean Island and stop it there. Right. So, yes.
Okay. And so is that further analysis that will need to be done by the city in order to show that this standalone project has independent utility?
Let's see here.
You've got another slide?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, point out the elements that, you know, we're discussing here in the first phase. And one is the blue dotted line, which is Marine Drive as you know it. And then the black dotted line would be a single-span bridge connecting Wallace Road to Liberty Commercial. The, yeah, to me, it's self-evident that there would be independent utility. However, through the environmental process, there is a need, when you get to a certain point, to do a, what's called a reevaluation. And so the current EIS, environmental impact statement, does not envision this as a first phase. So at some point, when we were ready to move ahead with this first phase, we would have to do a reevaluation of what does it mean to just build one span? What is it going to do to the traffic at each end? And so there would be some analysis that would happen.
Just to follow up, if I may. Well, it's my understanding that in the original planning for this, you know, part of the requirements is you have to consider where there are other alternatives other than to a new bridge, to building something new. And one of the alternatives said we could add two lanes, one each, to the Center Street Bridge and Marion Street Bridge, but I think the analysis was, well, two lanes isn't enough. We need four lanes. So why is two lanes enough now when in the analysis, when we were looking at four lanes, two lanes wasn't enough?
I don't remember looking at one lane added on each bridge. You know, I know that alternative 2A did add some additional lanes. You have a lot of issues with the current ramp connections that create difficulties, so I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
There's a couple, three references to what might happen if the decision is remanded. What is the, tell me what that means versus reversed or withdrawn.
Sure. So right now, the decision has been appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. DLCD withdrew their appeal, but the other petitioners are, at this point, in the process of writing their brief. Good luck with that. And so at the end of the day, if Luba were to agree with petitioners that the city committed some error by not having adequate findings or not having substantial evidence to support the decision based on the mandatory criteria, they would remand it back to the city, saying, well, you have these errors and you need to fix these errors before you submit the decision again.
Between that and reversal?
Reversal is sort of the nuclear option, so to speak, but basically it says that as a matter of law, the city's decision was impermissible. While it's always possible, I think that's a remote possibility in this case.
And withdrawal would be us saying we surrender or something? Okay.
At this, if I can just emphasize that point, at this point, the city can't withdraw their decision because the record's been filed and the parties are briefing, so it's not possible for us to withdraw at this point.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple quick questions?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I am.[1581.41][1581.41](laugh) We just don't do it that way. I apologize. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Why don't we pull this one up now and have a motion on this? Counselor Kaiser, you were going to pull this. Why don't you give us the motion?
Thank you. I move that the city council deny the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development relating to the Salem River Crossing project.
Second.
Second by...
He can do it.
Okay, Hoyt. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I've brought up some of my points, but I will reiterate a few of them. This IGA, I think, as Dan alluded to, already does things that we do as a city and should be doing as a city. And I don't necessarily think we need an agreement to do the right thing here. And that's the things, all the points it has in this, and I'm not going to read them all off, but it's things like residential density, mixed-use development, looking out for bike and pedestrian facilities, all of those types of things. So I think the IGA is not necessary. To the larger project of the Salem River Crossing, briefly, I have been opposed to this project for a long, long time for a lot of reasons. The first, actually, is because I really feel the process has been flawed. And I was first kind of aware of that with the Salem River Crossing Task Force. And our neighborhood representative on that, who happens to be my husband, Eric Bradfield, and he would come home at night and tell me all sorts of things. And it was really discouraging to hear that. And especially at the end of this, when less than a majority of the people on the task force voted for the bridge. I mean, it was 10, 10 out of 22 votes actually voted for a bridge. All of the neighborhood associations affected by this bridge voted no for it. That is, West Salem, Highland, Grant, Candu voted against this bridge. I've had conversations with task members who, they're just, they were very disappointed in the process. So I think, and that was back in, what, 2010, 11, 12? So I think that was, that is one of the reasons I have been opposed to this project. The second reason is because there is no viable funding for this bridge right now. And I think it's, I think it's really a disservice, too, when we ask our citizens to fund something that we can't explain how they'll do it. I think if you, for example, take the police facility, we're telling people, this is how you would fund the police facility. You would fund it through a bond and this is how much it would cost you. Plug in your address in this map and you can see exactly how much you'll be paying. With this bridge, we're basically saying, yeah, we'll figure out a way to fund it, but we can't really tell you how we're going to do it. And I just, I just don't think that's a realistic thing to, and I think it's kind of a burden to put on people, too. The third thing, and I'm going to let other people talk about this, this bridge really impacts the quality of life for several neighborhoods. The draft EIS, it says directly that this bridge will have a negative and cumulative impact... impact on some of the predominantly lower-income minority and elderly residents in our city. And I think it's unconscionable for us to put the bridge here. I think it's an environmental justice issue, and the draft EIS actually speaks to that. So, for all of these reasons, I just, I just can't support this agreement.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. When this originally came up for a vote with the UGB and the Transportation System Plan in December, I raised a number of points, and I'm not going to repeat those points. Some of them were raised by Counselor Kaiser. And I do have some additional points that I want to raise, and as we do with public testimony, I'm not going to make some points that have already been made here. So, in the first case, this is just another step toward a project that is economically, environmentally, and commonsense, unnecessary, and unbuildable. It advances a mistake. I ran against this bridge, and I have consistently opposed it, and I intend to keep faith with this opposition and the people who voted me in. Second, this seems sort of to me like a reverse bait and switch. The standard bait and switch is, you say, "Here's a low price," and you come into the store, "Oh, we don't have any of those, but why don't you buy something that costs more?" Well, we're sort of doing the opposite here. Here's this big, big bridge, and now we're going to build a smaller bridge. If a smaller bridge is what was planned, then why waste time, money, and energy with planning for a freeway bridge, and in the environmental impact statement? If this is now proposed as a smaller project, we may need to start the planning process all over again. This was a regional project with other governmental agencies, all of whom wanted a regional bridge, and I would include Dallas with that, yet they are not involved and not consulted about the MOU/IGA. Do you really think they want a two-lane bridge? In fact, that was what was originally planned at some point, as what was originally called the Salem Alternative. We had a big presentation on that, and then I went to SCAS, which is the regional planning, and all of a sudden, the two-lane Salem Alternative turned into a freeway. One of the original rejected alternatives was improving the current bridges. This was rejected in favor of a freeway, because two additional lanes were not enough. If that was the case, as posited by the four-lane proposal, why is the two-lane bridge now sufficient when it wasn't before? Tolling is an adopted plan in the Adopted Funding Strategy Memo, along with gas tax, property tax, license fees. There's nothing about any regional contributions here, meaning the regions, the county, and the other cities. So, so, the other, I can't remember if I said this, but it's gas tax, property tax, license fees, and tolling. Those are the four things that are recommended. And of that, $430 million cost of the bridge, 175 of that, 175 million was tolling. Gas tax was 85 million. Vehicle fees were 85 million. Property tax was 30 million. So, you know, tolling is an integral part of this. And yes, it's true, may be true that the other bridges cannot be told, but, you know, they're a mile at most from this bridge, and we live in a society where people drive all the way across town to save two cents on a gallon of gas. So, I don't think anybody's going to be saying, "Well, I'll go north for 10 minutes, cross a bridge, and then go south for 10 minutes, and pay $1.50 for the privilege of doing that." That's not going to happen. So, the bridge, it's going to be less feasible and less realistic to have any plan for the bridge. So, I'm going to oppose, I'm going to support the motion and oppose the IGA.
No.
No, no clapping, please. Counselor Nank, you'd like to see your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, for the moment. Turned the wrong way, and changed on me. Just to address a couple of the issues in that, actually, I was rather chagrined to actually hear that the city is the one who put in the congestion pricing element on that, because we'd always heard that, as people talked, well, they had to look at all these different options in due course. I'm a firm opponent of any tolling, and the motion that's on the floor, I think I know where it's going to go, so I won't waste our time to make a substitute motion to approve with the removal of the congestion pricing piece. But, I agree with people that we need to tell them how we're going to try to fund this. Bond measure would be logical, and then other regional dollars. And until we can tell anybody anything, it won't go forward. But, tolling, I will not be the first city, I will sit here for another 20 years to make sure there's no tolling on a bridge in town, especially not the first one in our state. So, that being said, I'll oppose the motion, but I would support a motion that would be different from that. How's that?
That's clear as mud, is what that is. I would say, I'll sit here another 20 years and not vote for tolling, too, but I don't think I'll be around in 20 years, so I think I'll stop on that one.
I'm medically trained, I can help.
You're young enough and stubborn enough to do it. You know, I understand, and certainly respect, the folks that disagree that we should be building a bridge. That's not what we're talking about here, in my mind, and I've consistently said, "I'm not voting for anything that costs $400 million. I'm not voting for anything until we know clearly what the funding is." But I'm also, and this is my rather logical, illogical mind, I came to Salem in '72, '74, and it was 67,000 people or so. It's now 165,000 people or so. And with, by 2035, it's supposed to be 250,000 people or so. At some point, there's going to have to be more than one crossing over that bridge. And you can call it the Third Bridge, it's really the Second Bridge. Those other two represent one bridge. You go one way, one, it's basically one bridge. All that being said, what we're doing here is doing the paperwork to build a bridge. Now, if you're going to vote against it because you don't like where it's designed, or it's purported to be with the environmental impact statement, I guess I understand that. I'm not sure what else you're going to build, that it makes sense to me to be there. It's a two-lane bridge right now. I don't even want to get into that discussion. What we have here is bargaining in good faith between the city staff and the DLCD. They reached this agreement. The agreement, whether you agree with it or not, I think there's good things in it. There's things that help folks if they're concerned about alternative modes of transportation. That's in here, it's being dealt with, and it's being addressed, it's in our plan. But, this is wholly in the city's feet to the fire, and seeing if you're actually meeting the numbers you put in the plan, we want to see. And if not, we're going to discuss how you're going to reach those. So, I think, basically doing the paperwork, getting it done, and moving forward, and then deciding if and when, whether it's I'm on the council or not, or whoever the future council is, that's another whole issue that you're going to have to decide down the road. But if you're going to start all over again, when you really do need a bridge, and all of a sudden, "Oh, we're starting all over with an environmental impact statement." It'll be 10 years, but we'll get that thing cleared, when you need it sooner than that, and then another 10 years to build it, you'll be 30 years down the road if you start fooling around with this thing now. This is just doing the paperwork to allow it to be considered. There's no vote pro or con, so I'm not going to support this motion. I'm just a little confused why this is, this is a theory victory, if that's really what you're after here.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, one comment, because I heard it in Counselor Anderson's comments. As far as I know, the city of Salem, nor any of the regional partners, have voted on or agreed on a funding package. The adopted funding plan that's referred to over and over again is a plan that came out of charats, and it was a puzzle that was given to the participants. Here's the cost, and there's no federal money, and there's a little state money, how would you pay for it? So, it was a make-believe, a what-if scenario. We, at this current time, do not have an adopted funding plan. I hope we get to one. And I actually hope we get to the point where the voters get to chime in on this. Right now, the attempt to do whatever is based on five people voting one way, five people out of 165,000. I think this is an issue that should go to the voters, but this might be the quickest way. I, I'm going to vote against the motion. I don't really have any heartburn about turning this down. I've never been a real big fan of the Department of Land Conservation and Development telling us, the city, what to do. I think they've stepped way out of their realm. So, again, I don't have any heartburn, but I think it is an embarrassment for the city of Salem to enter into negotiations, have the city manager sign them, and then have the council say, "No, we don't want that." So, the last thing, for those that think this is a vote that killed the bridge, tomorrow, the bridge process is going to continue, just like it did today.
Counselor Nank.
Thank you. You look tired.
It's 40 years of listening.
Well, and just to kind of get back on track with that, if we don't agree, or if we don't accept this intergovernmental agreement, then there's potential that they will become an appellate again, and so we'll have to deal with it.
Because there's no definitive finding.
Okay.
No, yes? I think people need to know the answer to that question.
Well, they've already dismissed their appeals, so they wouldn't be an appellate, but there is an opportunity for them to participate in it.
Okay. That being said, all of these things are things we're already doing.
Yeah, I, I'm going to vote against it as well. I happen to agree at two-lane bridge, as many of you have said, even some of you voting on the other side have said, a two-lane bridge is really what makes sense. We worked hard on the Salem Alternative. We finally found a way to get it put into writing, to obligate the council. What we get if we don't, this IGA just holds future council feet to the fire on all these issues, including a two-lane bridge. What you get when you vote no on this is two, two- or three-lane bridges, which is what the EIS is going to call for. You won't have created that limiting factor that we all have been looking for, which I think is a mistake, myself. There are other factors that, I'll just give you a quick history, and I've mentioned 40 years, it's really longer than that. This has gone on. It will go on for 40 more. This is not the last time we'll hear about this. And I think one of the great disappointments has been that this wasn't resolved decades ago, and that we're having to go through it again now, again. Another group in 10, 20 years will go through this again. There's no question, we have to look at another river crossing. No matter what modes and all the ideas we may have for how this will evolve, what this comes out of, if you'll just stop for a moment and look at your comprehensive plan, I don't know if you've ever read the comprehensive plan, but it really, beginning in the '70s, began calling for the kind of housing development we're seeing. A whole bunch in the south, and a whole bunch in West Salem, both in the hills, to keep them out of the farmland, to keep us from crossing Corden Road into farmland. And the same thing over in Polk County. This allows us to continue that kind of strategy. Failure to do this is going to cause, I think, is going to slow down the housing development in West Salem we need to have to keep them, keep from going across Corden Road. And it definitely, definitely is going to harm economic development in West Salem. There's just no ifs, ands, or buts. Without this, West Salem's economic future is really retarded, and it's a, it's a real, I think it's just a genuine mistake. Plus, we're getting the description of a two-lane bridge, bike, walking, connecting east and west Salem, connecting Highland Neighborhood, Grant Neighborhood, to Wallace Marine Park directly, a major regional park. I'm just, I'm baffled by the decision not to go with this kind of IGA, and just let it go to the EIS, to the huge bridge. I don't get it. And frankly, to cut off the opportunity for the public to vote, because that's what this vote is, attempt to do. It doesn't do it. Doesn't really do anything. But it does cut off the ability of the public, it's an attempt, given the speech of the maker of the motion, it's sort of, "I know better," and I think that's a mistake. I really do. I think the voters here someday should have a chance to vote on this thing. So, I'll be opposed. Counselor.
Thank you. I just want to loop back and kind of respond to many of the comments that were made here. To clarify, this is not a "I know better" motion. This is after talking with a lot of people over a lot of years about the necessity of this, and also to the point of voting, we live in a representative democracy, and I was elected by people who do not oppose this project. And I have to be faithful to my constituents as well. I also just have real, I take real issue with the narrative that this is a manifest destiny-like preordination. This project was defeated in the '60s because of community concern. There's community concern now. I think, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. And maybe this is not the right project, in the right place, in the right time. I will be supporting my motion.
And hopefully, the voters someday get to decide. Let's go ahead and vote, Counselor.
I just want to say what she said.
Okay.
Can we remind what the motion is on the floor, just to get a refresher?
To deny the IGA. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nays? Okay, you got it? Okay. Motion passes. And, I have one more public comment. Casia Quillenin. Casia?
After that last trauma of the last hour and a half, I'm here to present something of a little lighter caliber. As you may be aware, I am the current chair of the Salem Parks and Rec Board, and I think my board has appointed me queen for life, something like that. So, we're just here to let you know that this is our latest brochure on what we have done, and sure it was in your packet. Over the years, our administrative assistant, Tony Whitler, and I have managed to pare down about eight, or nine, or 10 pages to this lovely two-page brochure. So, as you can see, we have listed approximately 20 different things that we thought were accomplishments, but I'm just going to tell you about just one of them that doesn't really show up very well here. We had a delegation, and it's one, and then I'll shut up. We had a delegation from the pickleball contingent. Everybody know what pickleball is? Okay, good, yay. Well, they showed up en masse one afternoon at our Parks Board meeting, and I didn't know they were coming, and I walk in, and there's a whole room full of people, just like this. And they all want to tell me all about how pickleball is the latest upcoming thing, and they have a plan for restriping Highland tennis courts, and they want to do it right now. About it. So, anyway, we had quite a discussion on that, and eventually, we did move forward with that project. They came in another time, I think, maybe twice more, and we were able to get a cooperative agreement going with Highland Neighborhood Association to use the Highland tennis courts and get them restripped, so that we now have pickleball in downtown, in our downtown core at Highland. And that's pretty exciting. So, I haven't tried it yet, but I have a standing invitation to try it anytime I feel like it. So, yeah, so we do do good things, and we do listen to the public every now and then, and we are going to be trying some new things this coming, this coming year, and we'll let you know about them in 2017, or 18. This is 17. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Casia, for coming down, and this is a terrific report, and I appreciate all the work you and your volunteers do. I just have one question about the tree advisory board. I just have one question about the tree advisory board. I see that was your first bullet that you've gotten education. Have you actually had any?
No, there have been no issues. If there had been, I would've told you about it.
Great, thank you.
We have had some discussion about the rules pertaining to how we will hold the tree advisory committee meetings, and of course, I drafted them all naturally, that's my specialty. And we're just waiting for the city attorney to tell us that he actually thinks that they are appropriate. Any moment now, we'll be fine. So...
As soon as I receive it.
Yeah. So, anyway, no, but there have no, been no issues that have come before us on that, so we're fine.
Okay. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask about the Walk in the Park, and the day that that will be coming up for Parks Foundation.
Oh, gosh, I don't know that. Tony, do you know?
Sorry, Tony.
In case you haven't met.
Good evening, Tony Whitler, Public Works, Parks Operations. A Walk in the Park is sponsored by the Salem Parks Foundation, and it is Saturday, the 29th, beginning at 9 o'clock. Come to the pavilion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions? Great report. Thank you, Casia, very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor McCoy, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.3E by Counselor Hoy.
Second by Nanki. Any discussion?
Yep, I will go through what the consent calendar consists of. We've got one resolution, 3.2A, which would transfer $63,250 of appropriation authority from the general fund, non-departmental contingencies to the general fund facility services, materials, and services. This is for the purpose of performing engineering design for a replacement cooling system at the Civic Center. We've got a, I'm assuming, a very old cooling system that needs to be revamped, and this is a first step toward that. 3.3B is authorizing the city to execute an attached lease amendment with the property, with a suite at 413, with the leaser, leasee, I'm sorry, a 413 industry for retail space at Liberty Parkade, getting out of that lease early for certain payments. Regional, 3.3C, Regional Traffic Control Center intergovernmental agreement, authorizes the city manager to execute the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for receiptment of federal funds and providing local matching funds so we can operate the Salem Regional Traffic Control Center. 3.3D accepts a petition for the vacation of a portion of Rose Garden Way Northeast. And 3.3F is approval of legislative positions, priorities recommended by the council legislative committee.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearings. The Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the 2017-2018 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan.
I am Kristin Rutherford. I'm the city's urban development director. And the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss the 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan, and to provide an opportunity for public comment. The Annual Action Plan addresses funding goals and priorities that are identified in the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. During the development of the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan, staff engaged the community in a variety of ways to solicit input, including meetings with the majority of the neighborhood associations, local stakeholders, a community-wide survey monkey, outreach to the Wednesday market, and various types of publications. The Annual Action Plan before you tonight, sorry, is an implementation of the goals that are identified in that 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. Community outreach for the Annual Action Plan is not as extensive as it is when we developed the Consolidated Plan. Annual Action Plan outreach consisted of contact with various social service organizations, attendance at an array of community meetings, published notices, website publication, and a notice on the city's Facebook page. And then that was followed by a 30-day comment period, which just ended on April 14th, 2017. So each year, the city solicits applications for funding that align with the goals of the Consolidated Plan. Each application then is reviewed for eligibility and provided to the Community Services and Housing Commission for their review and funding recommendations. Those funding recommendations are then incorporated into the Annual Action Plan before you tonight, and presented here to city council during the public hearing. The Community Services and Housing Commission reviews each of these applications based on four primary criteria, which are the goals of the Consolidated Action Plan, the project or program's financial viability, collaboration with other organizations, and community need. The amounts that are available to award include federal entitlement funds, program income, and project cost savings from previous years. The annual application cycle for these grants begins every November. We publicize notice of this process in the Statesman Journal, Minority Publications, then we issue a press release that's posted on the city's website, and provide informational notices at various organizational meetings, such as the Emergency Housing Network. Also during each application cycle, we establish a cutoff day and a time, and that deadline is communicated to potential applicants in multiple ways. And it's adhered to in order to provide fairness and equity for those that do submit their complete applications before the established dead time, deadline. Once the city receives the applications, staff reviews them for their eligibility, and then forwards them on to the Housing Commission. And then those recommendations are included, and I will be presenting those now. So, the funds that we have available during these grant cycles are often oversubscribed, meaning that there aren't enough funds to award every applicant, or to provide each applicant with their full funding request. So the projects to be funded this year from Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds, include $74,535 to West Care to complete roof repairs to a transitional housing facility for veterans, $612,740 to the Salem Housing Authority for the conversion of Yacquena Hall to affordable housing. Each of these grants, within those numbers I've just mentioned, also include some costs associated with project delivery. The awards also include $104,800 to Merit, and $67,785 to Interface Micro Enterprise. And both of these organizations are funded for micro enterprise development and training to meet economic development goals. $150,000 is being awarded to Garden Services for facility modernization that will create jobs. $88,000 to the Center for Hope and Safety for Case Management for victims of domestic and sexual violence. $50,230 to congregations helping people for emergency rental assistance to those at risk of homelessness. And $62,000 to the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network for Homeless Family Case Management. So, in addition to the Community Development Block Grant funds, we also have funds available through the Home Investment Partnership Programs, or what we call home funds. From this pot of funds, the proposed awards are $200,000 to the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, $174,770, including $41,770 for project delivery, to Catholic Community Services Foundation for St. Monica's Affordable Housing Reconstruction, $30,000 to Catholic Community Services for Community Housing Development Organization Operations, $90,000 to the Salem Housing Authority for Security Deposit Assistance, $148,200 to the Jason Lee Manor for Affordable Senior Housing Rehabilitation, and $300,000 to Mountain West Community Resource Trust for construction of affordable housing units on Portland Roads. Long list there. The proposed projects will provide various types of assistance to approximately 2,225 individuals and families within Salem and Kaiser. These projects assist low-to-moderate-income citizens with economic, social, and housing The Community Services and Housing Commission has also made social services general fund recommendations to council, and though it's not a requirement of this Annual Action Plan, these funds provide additional services to our community, and are included in this report. These social services funding provide an important safety net of emergency services to those that are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The Community Services and Housing Commission made social service funding recommendations based on these priorities. The programs proposed to be funded by the City of Salem's General Fund are further referenced in the plan. These programs here are designed to assist the most vulnerable populations in our community, and it's anticipated that 45,426 individuals will be served through these programs. Prior to this public hearing, a 30-day comment period was provided to the citizens of Salem and Kaiser for review, questions, and comments on the Annual Action Plan. As of today, the city has received two sets of questions regarding additional information on the plan. The questions received, along with staff responses, have been provided to you in your packet, and will be included in the final publication of the 2017-2018 Annual Plan. Staff recommends council adopt the 2017-18 Plan and approve its submission to HUD. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one public member, Jane Downing.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Jane Downing with the Center for Hope and Safety, 605 Center Street, Northeast. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the work of the commission that's been doing this plan. I've ser, I've been privileged to serve about 16 of my 20 years on one form of this commission, either the Social Service Advisory Board, or now the Community Services and Housing Commission. And every time, I'm impressed with how much work goes into one of these plans, and how much coordination that takes in the community. And I don't mean always something that you would necessarily see in the meetings that we have, but a lot of the social service programs work on coordinating with one another. We have a wonderful partnership with St. Francis, where we're able to provide some incredible services, so you see some of those things going on. You also see many of them coming together in forums like the Emergency Housing Network. And then also, as a commission member, I take really seriously being able to listen to community members, and many of the programs come every month and share with us the things that they're doing, how they're working with one another. All of that becomes incredibly important. And I just wanna say publicly, thank you to the council for making social services an important part of this city. As Kristin mentioned, this is an emergency safety net for individuals who are the most vulnerable in our community. Our program serves them, and we could not, that, the money that you, that is being presented to you, that goes totally to shelter services. So the most emergency kind of thing that you can have, folks fleeing from violence, that's where that money goes, each and every year that we've been privileged to receive it. And so I just wanna say thank you on behalf of all the social services in the community. You've made the commitment to have social service represented on this commission, and also to be a part of making those decisions, and so I'm honored to be a part of that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the commission's work. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Downing? Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor McCoy.
I, I move that we adopt the 2017-2018 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan, and direct staff to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development before May 15th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank Sarah Owens and Michael Livingston for actually looking at this and making some comments, and thank you also for responding. And the mayor, and Counselor Cook, and I, and some other people are on, as part of, McCoy. I knew there was, yeah, this guy over here, yeah.
Some other people.
Uncle Mikey.
Mickey.
Yeah. We're on a, a part of, we have a task force on part of, of the vision process that we're undergoing on homelessness, affordable housing, and social services. And we've been discussing this, including the issue relating to the Rock and the COCs, and I'm sure we'll be moving forward in this, on this in the future. But I certainly am supportive of what we've done so far, and hope we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have another public hearing.
Right. The city council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony for ordinance bill number 317 relating to vehicles for hire, taxis, transportation network companies, and amending Chapter 30 of the Salem Revise Code.
We don't have the colorful PowerPoint for you tonight. You've received the ordinance as a form of a feature report, as well as first reading. Thank you. But essentially, the intent behind the draft ordinance is to remove the bulk of the regulations that currently regulate taxis and TNCs, because the city already has an ordinance that allows TNCs to operate, just not in a method that the TNCs were willing to operate. Some of the biggest changes in the ordinance is we'll no longer be licensing either taxi drivers or TNC drivers. They will be reviewed and approved by their companies. The insurance requirements are fairly similar to what's in the current code. There is a provision that allows the different phases of insurance to apply for a TNC driver, depending on when the app is turned on, when it's turned off, and when they have a driver. The, essentially, it provides a, essentially, level playing field for taxis and TNCs. It treats them both the same. The only difference is in the insurance requirements, where the taxi companies own the cars and have a different insurance requirement than would a TNC company who doesn't own their cars, or drivers own their cars.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll hear from the public, okay? And we'll ask questions, you can ask questions of the public as well. Remember, three minutes. At two minutes, the yellow light's on. At three minutes, stop talking, please. And we'll go from there. Janelle Lawrence. Behind Janelle is John Isaacs. And we just soon have everybody kinda start lining up, so we can keep this moving. Both of these work. The podium's up.
Thank you so much for having me. My name's Janelle Lawrence, and I'm the Executive Director of Oregon Impact. We're the largest organization dedicated to preventing drinking and impaired and distracted driving. We were once known as the Clackamas County DUI Panel, and we became a nonprofit into 1998 to expand efforts to increase safe driving by reducing driving under the influence. The panel started in 87, following approval by the Oregon Legislature of a law allowing judges to require individuals convicted of driving while intoxicated to come to a presentation of those who have been victims of crashes, or offenders, as a condition of their probation or diversion. Since then, it's become our mission to prevent drivers from ever getting to a Victims Impact Panel, becoming more aware of the risks about drinking and driving, alcohol, prescription drugs, and the impact that it can have on families in the community and children. And I'm here to express my strong support for rideshare services. Simply put, from my seven years' experience as the Executive Director of Oregon Impact, expanding ridesharing services like Uber and Lyft to all Oregonians will benefit all who share our state's roadways every day. There are many reasons for this, including less congestion, cleaner air, and improvement to our local economy. But from my perspective, Uber and Lyft offer an even greater service. They make it easier for more people to make the responsible choice to not drink and drive. It allows everyone to have a designated driver. And for those who have made the unfortunate choice... And for those who have made the unfortunate choice to drink and get behind the wheel, rideshare service is something that is used every day to assist Oregonians that are on diversion to get their life back on track. The ability to hail an Uber or Lyft so easily allows those on diversion to continue to work, to pay their court fines, make their court appointments, and continue to participate in the lives of their families while their license is suspended. We have seen in my county a significant decrease in the number of people in diversion who choose to drive illegally, thanks to rideshare. When we provide education on impaired and distracted driving, Uber and Lyft are part of our toolkit. We know that once you consume that first drink, your brakes simply can't make a clear decision on your ability to drive. And rideshare helps people plan from the beginning of their evening out to be safe and not make a poor decision to drink and drive. The limited number of alternative transportation and the long waits do not make it a viable solution and led to many people taking that unfortunate risk to drink and get behind the wheel. I deal with the results every day of people making poor decisions to drink and drive, and I urge you to support rideshare and the services in your community, and I have no doubt in my mind you will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. John Isaacs, followed by Sean Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors. Thank you. My name's John Isaacs. I'm the Oregon Public Affairs Manager for Uber. You've heard from me before, and I'm happy to be here again tonight just to express our support for the ordinance before you. I really want to thank the city for the really collaborative, transparent process so far. We've attempted to operate and work with the staff and you in a way that is collaborative and transparent. I know you've heard from me before, so I'm going to keep my comments as short as possible, and I really want to focus on the safety features of ridesharing. I've provided each of you a fact sheet about the way the app works and the way ridesharing works to offer one of the safest forms of for-hire transportation available to residents of your city if we operate here. So first, bringing ridesharing to Salem will offer 24/7, 365 days of service and minutes to your residents, especially for people who may be somewhere in Salem after midnight in the early morning. People who need a ride, they didn't expect to need one, they'll be able to get one. I checked Uber's ETAs between 1:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. in Portland before I came down here, and they're consistently under eight minutes in Portland. We expect we will be able to hit the same here in Salem. Uber and Lyft offer riders and drivers a one-to-one connection. The rider sees the name, face, rating, make and model, and the license plate number of their driver. So they are connected with a specific driver, not a random person picking them up. They can see the rating. Drivers are also connected to a specific rider, so everyone knows they're in the right car. During the trip, it's tracked live on GPS. The driver's tracking it with their device attached to their dashboard. The rider tracks it on the same -- their device during the trip. They can report their status of their trip to anyone, any friend who has the same app. They can set up a family account where family members can be notified through a push notification that they're on a trip. The ordinance that's before you will require vehicle inspections once a year by local mechanics to ensure that vehicles meet a certain safety standard and quality, and it will require an annual driver screening that does a national social security trace through our third-party checker, for which we facilitated a conversation between your police department and checker so they could discuss how the background checks work. But it will require seven-year look back on violent crimes, three-year look back on a safe driving record to ensure a safe driving record, and will look forever on things like terrorist watch lists and the National Sex Offender Database. So the ordinance before you will ensure that everyone in Salem has access to a safe ride and minutes any time of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isaacs. Any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thanks for coming down. I probably spend more time than I should reading various news blogs on the Internet, which we all know is a series of tubes. And it seems like every time I look, there's something new coming up about Uber. Grayballing. What I read today was something about how Apple was quite upset with your use of apps because there was something on there that was doing some sort of tracking that Apple didn't like. What I've also heard is there are billions of dollars backing Uber, and there is some thought that at some point, competition may be driven out, and then it might be surge pricing 24/7. So I'm wondering if you could kind of respond to those things.
I mean, I can't respond to every story that's out there, and I can't speak to the accuracy or inaccuracy. I bet a lot of it's about sort of, I would describe as corporate intrigue in the San Francisco office. I can tell you that, and the one thing I do want to address in reference to grayballing, because that's been very local, we've fully cooperated with the City of Portland investigation. We've said that there was no use of that technology to avoid regulators or inspectors from the time that the City Council adopted a legal framework allowing ridesharing to operate in Portland. And we expect that to be resolved once the City of Portland releases their findings this week or next. And the company has said that nowhere will there be a use of any technology like that to deceive or avoid inspectors or regulators in the future, that it's now under control. I think what -- the one point I want to make is that you're voting on an ordinance that provides a service, that a product for your residents that is in high demand and does the things that I outlined here and the things that other supporters will tell you about. I think Uber is a company that's grown very, very quickly, and I can tell you as someone who works there, it's actually really empowering now to be part of working on a different culture within the company. The company's taking it very seriously. But it's no question the company culture needs some work through the quick growth that's occurred.
How many subscribers in Salem?
Oh, I meant to say that. So last time I was here, I told you that there are over 10,000 active writers in Salem. Actually, we ran the number again last week. We're now over 15,000 active writers. We've actually seen a spike now in sign-ups because of the news about the possibility of the service coming to Salem. We've seen a surge in driver sign-ups as well through the Portland office. So that's how quickly it grows once the word's spread that it'll be available locally.
Thank you. Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you, and thanks for your testimony. Just had a question off of your sheet here on the back. It says our disqualification criteria may vary by jurisdiction according to local laws. So for Salem specifically, in the code that's proposed, it says any person who's on a sex offender registry or has a record of a felony conviction within the previous seven years may not act as a driver. So I'm guessing then Uber as a company would abide by that ordinance. Does that mean, this may be a question of staff as well, does that mean somebody who is a sex offender who had a conviction over seven years ago may be a driver?
If they -- yes, if they had a conviction -- well, not yes and no. If someone had a conviction over seven years ago, we will not look at that. We look back at what the local ordinance requires us to look at. Seven has become very standard among cities and states that have adopted ridesharing regulations. The question to the sex offender thing, that's a forever look back. So we look at anyone who ever showed up on the sex offender website. If you ever showed up on that, you are disqualified from driving.
Okay. And as far as your -- the record of felony conviction, I understand it's only -- you're only looking at the previous seven years. So if somebody has been convicted of a felony of ranging from murder to on down, if they were convicted more than seven years ago, they could be eligible as a driver. Is that -- am I understanding that correctly?
They could be.
They could be?
Yes.
Do you have certain criteria that you automatically screen out? Like, for example, if somebody was convicted of murder or assault, something like that? I mean, can you just kind of describe what the things you look for as a company?
We look for exactly what it says. It's a binary zero, so we look back seven years. Someone would also have to have, you know, pass all the other criteria, have proof of insurance, have a clean driving record. But we'll look back seven years. And I can't speak to any specific instances where it might or might not catch something, but it looks back for convictions back seven years through a national social security trace. So that will look at any state in which that individual has lived.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Thanks for coming down tonight. So you said something that was really interesting, the transparent, how hard Uber has worked to be transparent during this process, and how they've worked collaboratively with the city on the safety issues as Counselor Kaiser and Anderson have talked about. I have a question about the service, 24/7, 365, to everyone, and the data. Because it seems to me, and in testimony both through the email and in testimony on previous hearings, people talk about the income they were able to earn by driving with Uber or Lyft, and how tremendous rideshare has been to help attribute to economic development or contribute to economic development. That's fantastic for a company and great, but I'm looking at the areas of the city that may not be served and how I would be able to, as part of the city and part of the council, be able to track that data. Because my concern is, you know, with the sharing economy, when things come in, they're not always easy to track. So if Uber or Lyft or rideshare is coming in, and we have residents that are still underserved and their transportation needs are not met, and we're hearing, but Uber won't come here because our neighborhood's not safer, you know, I've rated these drivers at zero and now they won't pick me up, and now my transportation needs are still not met, how does that data get back to the city? Who owns that data? How is it tracked? And how do we ensure that the service is equitable for people, not only with physical conditions? I mean, we've talked about the ADA compliance with taxis and whatnot, but even just with zip codes and where you're going.
Yeah, so I would encourage you, I know there's some drivers here we'll talk tonight, and I encourage you to ask about their experience in terms of where they go and do pickups. But so a couple of things. First, when the City of Portland released its report on their pilot program before they adopted their final regulations, one of the findings was that service to outer East Portland and North Portland, which are the two historically underserved parts of Portland, dramatically improved, both the number of trips that were offered and the wait times for people. So the trips went up and wait times went way down. I can provide that, a link to that. It's available on the Portland Bureau of Transportation website. One of the things that the ridesharing industry most is proudest of is that our -- the role we played in improving the availability of transportation to underserved areas. It's something that's very much a part of what we strive to do and believe that we offer communities, both through improved service, the number of rides available, and through wait times. A lot of the reasons we're able to do that are through the way the app works. Drivers don't see where they're going to pick somebody up until they hit the button. It's, you know, they know that they're in the area, they hit the button. So they -- we do things to prevent drivers from picking and choosing where they might go pick somebody up.
I'm sorry, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so in the way the app works, if you request a ride, it goes out onto the system, and it pings a number of drivers who are in the area. They don't see where the specific pickup location is, because we've seen that in the past that might lead to discriminatory choices. So drivers, you know, once they connect to the ride, then it tells them the address in which they're going to pick the person up.
So you're policing yourself as far as to make sure that there's no discrimination of riders?
There's features in the way the app works that would prevent sort of that type of behavior, I guess.
I'm sorry, those features are not public. That's proprietary knowledge from your --
Yeah, I mean, that's well-known, the way the app works. I mean, we talk about it. And then in terms of data sharing for the city, Uber has released a platform called Uber Movement that we will eventually bring to work with the city that provides aggregated trip data for cities. So it would provide aggregated data for any neighborhood, the number of trips, the busiest zip codes, things like that. It's a way of providing data that cities need for planning, to ensure equity, things that you're talking about, without risking the privacy of individual riders and drivers. So that's a product that we eventually would work with the City of Salem on to do, to get to the things that you're talking about.
Yes.
And I think this is a follow-up for staff. I just want to make sure it might be --
Why don't we do staff afterwards? That's how that works.
Perfect.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Isaacs? Counselor McCoy.
I'm looking, we've got a comparison here of what the Salem Police background check did versus what your background check would do. And I've got several checked here, I'm just wondering. First one is registered sex offender. Now, if somebody's convicted past seven years, it's been more than seven years, but they're also a registered sex offender, would they be able to work for you?
No.
No. Okay.
They would not be approved to be a driver.
They would not be approved.
Yep.
The other one is traffic history. So if they have, it says up here, minor violations in speeding tickets, traffic, et cetera, no more than three in three previous, in three in previous three years. Is that an ongoing check that you do for those drivers? Or is it when you hire them, if there was no more than three in three years, and then they could be speeding and doing all kinds of bad driving down the road?
So it's no more than three minor or one major, like reckless driving or endangering, you know, speeding to the level of endangerment. So it's rerun every year. So the ordinance that you're considering, every year, the driver screening is rerun for every driver. So if they pass it, but then during that year, they get three speeding tickets, the next time they go through it, it will catch them and they'll be --
Does that yearly review go for everything? In other words, you've got pending charges under the police, not eligible until the case is resolved because they know about it. You have no criteria because you don't have access to the info.
Right.
So you hire somebody, and then there's some pending charge here that would mean you wouldn't hire them. You check, do you recheck your drivers annually to see if something's occurred?
Yes, the entire screening is annual.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Isaacs, I want to go to the, do you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you?
Yep.
No? Yes?
I have what's in your agenda.
Okay. Why don't you go to page nine, lines nine through 11? And I want to understand how that fits with your testimony. And this is running to the question of sex offenders.
Okay, where is it?
It's on page nine of the ordinance, lines nine through --
It's under driver requirements, right?
Yeah. You see the, see what I'm referring to? Any person who is on a sex offender registry or has a record of a felony conviction within the previous seven years may not act as a driver.
Yes.
That sets that at a very, that sets that at seven years. You said it would be forever. I want to kind of understand.
So the criminal back, so any person who is on a sex offender registry --
You see what my problem is there from what you said? I want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to clarify that in the language, the sex, anyone who's on a sex offender registry does not qualify through this --
Counsel, we'll clarify that in the final language.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get it, I want to get it real clarified to the city attorney, and everyone's satisfied.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is meant to be a standalone statement.
I got it.
Okay.
I got it. Okay. I can see there's a wordsmithing problem there.
Yes.
Yeah, go. I'm sorry, Counselor Cook.
Do you do drug testing before people are allowed to drive?
No, we do not.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Isaacs? Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you.
Very much. Sean Miller, followed by Joshua Bowen.
All right, Mayor Bennett, members of the Salem City Council, Sean Miller, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Property Casualty Insurers Association on particularly just, we do support ordinance 317, and just want to talk about the insurance coverage required in the ordinance. It does represent a national agreement between the transportation network companies and the insurance industry nationally, which has been adopted in most states and local jurisdictions, including, I know the one I last worked on in the City of Portland. The understanding of the insurance coverage gives flexibility, protects the driver, protects the passengers in a TNC, and draws that bright line between someone's personal auto policy. Again, they're driving their personal car that has a personal auto policy, and when the app comes on, the app goes off. And so again, switching to that commercial coverage, app on, app off, and drawing when you're actually, you know, moving between that personal into that commercial activity. And those are the three periods that were outlined in the ordinance. Period one is when you're waiting for a match, so you could be using your car for personal activity. Turn the app on, at that point, you may be doing the same kind of activity as you were on your personal auto, but as soon as you hit that app on, you may be going to the grocery store. You are in period one, and the requirement under that period is 50,000 bodily injury per person, 100,000 bodily injury per accident, and 25,000 property. That's the minimum. What's important with the national agreement is it also includes coverages that are required by states for medical. And so again, insurance regulations is at the statewide level. Department of Consumer and Business Services, we do require, unlike other states, because like the -- and Business Services, we do require, unlike other states, because like the city of Washington does not require this, I'm sorry, the state of Washington does not require this, but personal injury protection coverage, uninsured motorist coverage, underinsured motorist coverage, those are all requirements at the state level. And in that national agreement representative, those are all covered in period one and required in that coverage. The second period is, is the second period when the match is made. Again, you heard from the transportation network companies, that's when that match is made and they're on their way. There's a million dollar coverage at that point, but again, all the uninsured motorists and PIP coverage is also applied. And then the same applies when the passenger enters that vehicle under the period three and that million dollar protection, as well as the, the PIP and UIM coverage. So with that, I just wanted to outline our support for it. It represents that, that agreement, and allows for, again, that proper insurance coverage that allows them to do business and allows the innovation of the transportation in the city. So thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor McCoy?
Guess that's my shifty mind, but if you had somebody in their personal car and they just constantly went, okay, I'm on Uber now, click it on, drive around, do their things, okay, I'll go to Lyft, I'm on Lyft now and drive, they'd be, could they job the system and just sort of consistently be covered while they're driving around town doing their own chores and errands?
Is the question under their personal policy? Would they be covered?
Well, yeah, well, if they've got the app on--
Then they would not be covered under their personal--
No, but they'd be covered under--
They would be, they would be covered under, again, because they are waiting for a match, and so they are on the clock, and I guess it's a good question for the transportation companies. But under this, you know, insurance companies have the ability to have an exclusion in their, you know, in their own policy, in which case this would always kick in, and the TNC, the transportation network company, would always have to, you know, adhere to these requirements. And so as long as that app is on, these requirements are, you know, insurance coverage is provided under those circumstances. And so in our eyes, and again, before this national agreement, there was, particularly in period one, we had disagreements with when the personal policy would kick in and when they were on. Exactly what you said, Counselor, and I think this draws that bright line. And again, from around the country, this has worked to draw that bright line for us, and make it so there's less insurance disputes. Again, prior to that, we had a lot of insurance disputes, particularly in period one.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I missed what you were from, you're from a national insurance group?
So I, I'm a lobbyist here in Oregon, but I represent the Property Casualty Insurance Association.
Got it, okay, thanks.
I work specifically here.
A follow-up to Counselor McCoy's question. I do a lot of work for insurance companies, and I know the first thing that I'm tasked with doing is see if you can find some way to deny coverage, to get out of it, which is, I think, what is happening here, which is not a bad thing, that's just the way companies work. My question is, what if the driver on the personal policy had higher limits than required under the ordinance? Is, would that be any kind of secondary insurance there?
That's a good question. The actual ordinance allows for that flexibility for, again, this is the minimum coverage, and just like your personal auto policy where you have minimum coverage, this does take into account and allows the insurance company, and for instance, you may have a nicer car or have different coverage that you want to buy, just like you would your personal, you can choose to go to your, maybe a company that'll offer a TNC coverage on your personal coverage, and you can actually purchase way above these limits if you want, just like you do on your personal. I, I choose to buy higher than my minimum policy under the state law. This gives that flexibility for you to do that, and offer those, again, whatever the insurance coverage, if you want higher, we'll sell it to you.
One, one final question on that. Let's, let's suppose that someone is injured by the Uber driver or the TNC driver, to be more appropriate, and it, their, their damages are higher than the minimum limits. And so, you know, in that situation, you can, you know, the, the injured party could potentially still proceed against the, the tort feeser, as it were.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Counselor.
So, so, is that, does that, is the, is that the TNC, or is that the individual driver who, against whom they would proceed?
They would proceed against the TNC requiring that insurance on--
Well, that almost seems to me like then, the, under that theory, the driver would be an employee of the TNC.
No, I think, well, again, they would be providing the coverage for that driver, and so--
Okay.
So again, the driver is the one that is either at fault at an accident and responsible for any kind of an accident in that, in that case. So, you know, I think just like your personal policy, your limits are your limits, and anything above that would take further action. But again, when this was looked at at a national level, we wanted adequate protection that is priced reasonably, just like you would, you know, on a minimum, where you're not pricing somebody out of the market where they, they're not doing this business. And so again, that was a lot of the agreement with the TNCs. Thank you.
Counselor Cook, did you have a question?
Not a question, no. I'm waiting.
I'm sorry.
Patiently.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sean Johnson? Ah, there you are.
Mayor Bennett, members of the council, it's nice to see you all again. I won't waste the council's time by reissuing my opinion as to where I think this should go. I did want to come and make myself available for answering any questions the council may have, and I also wanted to bring some information. After I was here last, there was some talk that I became privy to, where there had been recommendations for limiting the number of drivers based on having a surplus. And I would actually say, well, I'd like to share with the council that they mentioned in, I'll leave the nameless, that there was, Salem has no need for 500 drivers. I say, why not? If 500 people in Salem want to drive for Uber and Lyft, let them. We're a free enterprise economy that self-regulates. If the driver's not making much money during a time of day, they won't drive, which will create more demand for the other drivers who choose to. There is also comments made of thousands of drivers sitting around Portland with nothing to do, you know, sleeping in their vehicles. I can attest as a, driving for a year now and getting back into what I would call the busy season, that even at my slowest, I maybe waited five minutes for a ride, long enough to, you know, stop my car, check it for dirt, and, you know, grab a drink of water. And during the busy season right now, half the time, I'm being matched up with a drive, with another passenger before I'm even dropping off my current one. I get notified that there's someone else waiting for me, because I'm going to be the closest driver. Uber and Lyft do amazing things to help communities, and personally, I know there's some concern with under, under-accessed areas. I've driven over 20 miles to pick up a passenger before, from the PDX airport all the way down to Oregon City, you know. And I know numerous drivers that have driven further, because when someone's there, we are incentivized by the system and the way it's designed to pick up our passengers, not to ignore them. If we decline too many rides, we aren't able to use the system. There are consequences, because they, you know, they don't want someone just sitting logged in and not actually serving the community. And that's all built into the systems the way they're already in place. And so I would encourage you again to move forward with this. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability, and if I don't have the answers, I can get them.
Counselor Anderson?
Thanks for coming down again.
Anytime.
I don't need the actual number details, but when you pick up a fare, and how much of that fare goes to you and how much goes to you, Uber, in percentages?
That's an excellent question. The default percentage for the Lyft Corporation and for Uber, because I do drive for both, is 75% is given to the, to the driver. Lyft actually allows me to earn 20% of their 25% back, sheerly by doing quantity of rides within a week. They incentivize us to not, you know, delay canceling and not to cancel our, our passengers. We're required to maintain, I believe it's a 95% acceptance rate to earn that bonus, and it does earn up to 20% of their 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Kaiser?
Yeah, thanks again. I just had, you brought up something that raised a question in my mind, and that was, you say when you're delivering a passenger, sometimes you accept a ride even before you're done delivering the first person. How are you doing that physically? Like, are you on your phone while you're driving to do that?
No. The way the Lyft, the way the Lyft system is designed, my tablet is actually up as my GPS, and I'll receive an audio notification saying a passenger has been added to your queue. That's the, there's no interaction required on my part. Once I've dropped off my passenger, I'm then given the location of my next one, and I can proceed to them.
Okay, good, good answer.
Is that how you do it, Counselor?
I do not, I do not use--
Okay, any further questions for Ms. Brown? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, members of the council.
Thank you. James Tricasso?
Hello, my name is James Tricasso. I live at 1014 24th Street, northeast Salem, and I greatly support Uber and Lyft operating in Salem, Oregon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Rose?
Nice to be back here as Chuck Bennett. Thank you for being our mayor. I do support this as also, as some of you may listen to the Gator radio experience, he does, they both, Gator and these do support this, the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce does support this. I just want you to think, I just read in, this month, on the 18th, Portland is allowing them to use self-driving cars. I have not, I just read it as I was coming in here. I very, quite want to get more information about that before I present more information, but that was in the Bloomberg website. And, I mean, I support it, because we need a system that is going to be there for us and attract more businesses to the Salem-Kaiser area. Right now, as some of you guys know, our chariots buses seem to be going downhill. I remember when I was a kid, I could walk about, I'd say, 12 blocks and catch the chariots. Now, that 12 blocks has become 24 blocks. I actually just calculated that out two days ago. I remember when chariots used to go into Salem Town in West Salem. They don't do that anymore. They only surface the, what I call the ghetto of West Salem, the flats, and that's about it.
Okay, Mr. Rose, thank you very much. And Sean Johnson? No, Johansson, I'm sorry.
No, he already--
Joshua Bowen? Okay, I'm sorry, Joshua. I'm, I'm just going to keep calling Sean back.
Can everybody hear me? First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak. I've never done something like this before, so this is a great honor for me. I'm representing a section of the population that is, was briefly talked about by the Ubers representative, people with disabilities who are underserved. I can completely relate to this on several key issues. First of all, when I have done Uber in Portland, and I love the security aspect of how you were talking about out on the app, as a person with a visual disability, we can see exactly who's coming, where they're coming from, the driver's name, the license plate number, and the type of vehicle. So therefore, with somebody cited, if we are, say, in a group of people, I can ask somebody, hey, I am looking for a Uber driver, say his name is John Smith, driving a Lincoln Town Car, for example, and I'll have that safety of knowing that information ahead of time. Whereas, say, with the transportation options in Salem currently, the yellow car, for example, you don't have that ability. You call dispatch, and they do not tell you, all they tell you is a name, they don't tell you the type of vehicle, who's coming. So as a person who is totally blind, that is a very major security issue. And also, when in Uber, the way the credit card system is set up in place, you don't have the ability as a driver to take advantage of a person with a disability who can't see, because of the fare structure and the way it's designed. Whereas with a taxi, that is possible, because you are handing them a physical card. I am not saying that that's happened to me, but I am sure it has happened. So I fully support this system and this ordinance, because it will benefit a underserved section of the population, and also because of the limitations of chariots, that is my only option in certain circumstances. I would take Uber much more if it was available here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for testifying. That's everyone signed up. Anyone else wish to testify? Yes?
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes, you can.
Hi, my name is Jessica Brochek in Tricasso. I live at 1014 24th Street. One thing to add to that, I'm an employee at Fred Meyer on Market Street. We have a lot of regulars that come in to shop with us. One in particular is a 70-year-old gal who walks about, she lives five miles from the location, and her, she's not able, for some reason, to have Cherry Lift, which is the chariots. She calls cabs and they will not pick her up, because she's only five miles away, and they say it's a waste of time. So knowing someone who is an Uber driver who will pick someone up no matter what, that opportunity, I feel like, would be such an open advancement for her, and for others like her, that make it very difficult when cabs want to deny because of the location or whatnot. So that's my proposal on it, I think it would be a great idea, so.
Great, thank, anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Did you want to? Yeah? And be sure to say your name and address.
Hi, I'm Chris Palmer. I live at 760 Vista Avenue here in town, and I'm an Uber driver, I'm a Lyft driver. I was a former Whittlesey cab driver in Las Vegas, and I was also a veteran in the air force. Driving Uber and Lyft has provided me the safest method of driving I've ever had. When I was taxi driver in Vegas, I was robbed three times. There is also, when people would get to the destination, sometimes they would just jump out and run, sometimes they would take in, you know, their credit card would get declined, and they'd have no money. And being a driver, I front that on my fuel. So with Uber and Lyft, I have the ability to know that the payments are going to come through, everything's going to be great. You know, there is a dispute system, so if I end up taking the wrong way to get to somewhere, I can take in dispute, saying, hey, I went the wrong way, or they could too. Everything's tracked, it's nice, it's convenient, you can look at it all online and show, like, for example, if I brought somebody from here to the Portland Airport, or from Portland Airport to here, you can see that I took the exact proper route to get somewhere. There's, there's really not a bad thing about it. There is a big separation between the corporate environment and the drivers. You know, as drivers try and do the best things that we can for you guys, you know, with corporate environments, especially with like Uber, they kind of pioneered the way through this, so it was a lot harder for them than, say, Lyft, who's kind of following up with it. So there's, you know, that sort of a situation. Plus, they're also a tech company, so I don't really-- But, but on the other side of that, I mean, they do really good for us, you know. The whole system that changed the way the insurance coverage, everything like that, you know, they're pushing for something nice for us. I, I've had the best ability of working, I have appointments that I take care of and stuff, so I can just completely turn off and go do my appointments anytime I want to. You know, there's a 12-hour limit to us driving, so with that 12-hour limit, that means after 12 hours, I don't drive for the rest of the night, you know, or I could leave at four hours if I wanted to. I'm not required, like I was while I was a taxi driver, working 6:12 in Las Vegas, to work those 6-12 hour shifts or lose my taxi. So that's, that's how it is now.
That's great, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir? Yeah? Yeah, come on.
Good evening. I'm Yuri Alisay. I live 4391 Stacy Place, northeast Salem. I am Ukrainian. Four months ago, I moved to Salem, and now I have a big problem. My son studies, and I live, before I lived in La Causa Vega, and my son studies in Portland, at Portland State University, my wife works in Portland. I have a problem-- I have a problem, they don't have cheap way to reach Portland. Taxi, I don't know how much cost ride by a local taxi company, but I check website, and they gave me price around $250. Is that correct, from Salem to downtown Portland? Is that correct? $200? No. Local company, taxi company, is that correct? $250? It's cost.
Just say what, yeah, go ahead and give your testimony.
Uber.
Yeah.
Uber. Sometimes we order, my family, members of my family order Uber or Lyft. It's cost around, from downtown Portland to downtown Salem, to Northeast Salem, around 60, 70, 60 or 70 dollars. Do you feel difference? $200 and 60 or 70 dollars? It's big difference. I want that you allow to create ride-share companies in Salem, it's because simple people need reach, simple people need cheap way to reach any destination. And, why people who live in La Causvigo, Beaverton, other places Portland material could, can order this cheap service? But people who live in Salem cannot order this cheap service. If here live more richer people in Salem than in La Causvigo or West Lynn, I ask it, please allow this company, because we are simple people, we need this cheap service. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. What else? Yeah?
Can I say something? My name is Lee Lynch. I live at 3043 Hamill Northeast Salem, Oregon, and I'm the general manager of Willamah Valley Yellow Cab. And I want to let the council know and the city know. This whole business of Uber and the taxi cab companies being in an adversarial relationship is, is a myth to me. It is not an adversarial relationship. What it is, it is a period of time in this country, and in this time and in this place, where the taxi cabs and the ride-for-share companies are coming into a conflict. Taxi cabs for years have been regulated by cities such as yourself, Portland, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and they did their best to comply with the rules. So, many times taxi cab companies think that, oh, Uber's coming into town, it's going to destroy our relationship, it's going to destroy our business. But that is only because the taxi cab companies has set up the business based upon the rules and regulations that municipalities have actually put forth. So, I can see the writing on the wall. I see it. I see a change in the industry. And so, I cannot speak for everybody at Willamah Valley Yellow Cab, but I can speak for myself, that whatever the city decides, we at Willamah Valley Yellow Cab are probably going to tweak our business model just a bit. We are going to take advantage of the new regulations. This is not scary to me. This is the opportunity to engage in a new business practice, which has probably never before taken place in Salem, nor in Portland, nor in San Francisco. And I will commend the council on this, and the citizens of this city. You have given us the opportunity to go ahead and to, as much as possible, to compete on par with the companies of Lyft and Uber and other companies. It's not just Lyft and Uber, but it also could be us in a changing of our own standards. But there are certain things we will never change. We're just too entrenched in it in our traditions. So, I want to thank the council for letting me have the opportunity to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, one question. I do have one question. It was something that came to me the other day.
Sure.
Why, why only yellow cab? Why are the other cab companies not here?
You know, I cannot speak, I've learned something. I never speak again for somebody else, I never speak against anybody else.
Right.
What I do is, I only worry about myself.
Okay.
And my company.
I just found it interesting, because there are multiple cab companies, and you guys have been really, you know, forthright and here telling us and helping us through this process. I just, I just wondered where everybody else was. I'm not asking you to speak for them. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I thought you might know.
We are the lion cab company in town.
Okay.
We are the, we eat those people.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's everyone, I think. Okay. So, what do we need here?
I'm waiting, though, I don't want to.
Questions of staff. Counselor Cook.
I'll make it brief. I'm not quite sure who to direct this to, but my question is in regards to congestion in the first part of the hearing tonight, and I know throughout the week, we get emails about congestion and traffic. It's a popular topic whenever I'm out and about. What ability are we using right now to measure traffic levels? How can we measure that when this ordinance comes through and changes? And how can we ensure that we are not creating more congestion, creating another problem and trying to fix one problem?
But do not say congestion pricing down.
No, I'm not saying congestion pricing. I'm just thinking, if we're looking at who is riding, where are they wanting to go, who would be using apps, where would they be going? Destination sites in and around town? If people are going to casinos, if people are going to downtown businesses, if people are going to capitals? How much, where would we be able to rely on that data coming from Uber? What safeguards have we gotten in or from Lyft? And I'm just making sure, I mean, a lot of cities, I know Paris is trying to go car-free downtown, carbon, and air quality in Marion County in general has shifted, so we're looking at how to improve air quality here. I'm not sure, the testimony tonight talked about the economic benefits of Uber and Lyft, and making sure that people can have access to transit in a timely way, which sounds, that there's been good quality and testimony for that. But is our goal in council, how will this affect our air quality? How will this affect congestion in already congested areas? What measures do we have in place to measure that and gather the data?
Counselor, let me, let me take a run at this while they're thinking of an answer. If you'll recall, Mr. Isaacs testified that one of the tools they're going to be providing to the city is a description of the concentrate, where they pick people up, and that should give us a sense of the kinds, I think, the kind of information you're looking for.
I think that sounds great, but my first question, in my mind, when he said that, is, aren't we already collecting that data? And are we not allowed to collect that data then? Because if we have more traffic coming into downtown, and we say traffic has increased, it's increased since we've allowed ride-sharing, because we know there's more drivers coming in, maybe from other small towns, people looking for other sources of income.
I think that's going to be a look back rather than a look forward right now. I don't think that's the way we, we track it at this point. Unless Robert knows differently.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Chandler, Assistant Director of Public Works, and I'm assuming Peter's up, watching this on his computer. So, could you shorten your question just a little bit for me?
Thank you, Robert.
Sure.
My concern is, how can we track to make sure that by allowing ride shares and with this measure going forward, we're not creating further congestion issues downtown? The data that we would be collecting from Uber, are we able to match that with data we're already collecting to ensure that it's complete and whole, information and accurate? Because the other thing, in the testimony tonight, there's certainly limited options for people as far as movement in the community. I am hesitant to become reliant on one source. And I know this is, this is multiple networks, Uber, Lyft, other driving sources, but I want to make sure that it's not contributing to poor air quality and further congestion issues, and how we would track that independently. Thank you.
So, I don't know the complete answer to your question. Normally, when we do traffic analysis, it's a fairly small segment, and you do traffic counts, you evaluate, and if you want to look over time, you collect the data over a long period of time to see any trends. And I think, just even with the Uber and Lyft and those types of ride share, any trend will be lost in the noise until you've collected a lot of data in specific areas. I'm not even sure you could do that. Normally, when you look at long-term projections, it's modeling that have large error bars around it.
Large what?
Large error bars.
So, plus or minus?
This is a number, plus or minus a lot.
Gotcha.
Sometimes in order of magnitude. And so, I don't know that you could actually do that and get a scientific, to use that word correctly, to set, to set a hypothesis and evaluate, you know, the test hypothesis, the null hypothesis, ask the question, collect data, do the analysis, and publish the results, that scientific method to look at this. I don't know that we could do that on something small like this.
So, we have no way of knowing if the ride-sharing networks were in Salem? We have no way of knowing if it would contribute in a negative way to transit flow?
I think no way is too narrow. I don't know that I could demonstrate to you with data and analysis and statistics that what's happening, one way or the other. I don't know the data are that good. That's my, that's my answer from what I can tell. But I'll talk to, you know, tomorrow, traffic engineers and others, and see how far off base I am, if at all.
Counselor McCoy.
Appreciate it.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Robert, is that because it's not, I want to make sure I understand it, because it sounds like the Uber information, you would know where they were and where they're going, but is it because you don't know what all the other cars, I mean, all the other traffic in town is doing to be able to really come up with an answer to Counselor Cook's question?
Well, Counselor Cook's question is fairly detailed, and do you have any way to know? And then the question is, do we know, maybe? And then how, how well can we know the answer? There's kind of two parts to that. And I don't know how well we can determine, you know, where the data are going and the accuracy of that. We could look at Uber's data. The other thing we don't have is a clear baseline prior to Uber that we've got. Or I don't know how good that, those data are and the analysis, the analyses that goes with that. That's, you know, the best I can do. I think we would find that a more telling result would be the anecdotal information we get over time, and trying to extrapolate perhaps what Uber has done, and backtrack with surveys and a softer social analysis, but I'm not sure we can get the scientific and traffic analysis that I think you're asking for there.
So, when you do your roads with Public Works and your infrastructure, there are trips per lifetime? So, you're measuring the trips, but we don't actually know when and where they are over a period of time?
No, we do. We do traffic counts in specific areas, times of day. A good example is we did traffic counts, trying to identify what options were for that crosswalk at, was it Trade and Ferry, and Trade and Commercial. We've done traffic counts at River Road, where we're trying to find out what are the impacts of changing the diameters of River Road south. So, you do it fairly narrowly, but not citywide. You take pieces of those, and you feed them into a large model that's run by the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, and they do a larger study based on the information and data you've got and projections.
And is it your understanding that if we move forward with the ride-sharing, that other regional, other regional groups may follow suit? That we would be the example that, well, because the issue of unincorporated areas, and I know this came up, that someone took an Uber down from Portland, but they couldn't take it back since we didn't allow it. So, I'm just thinking, you know, I'm driving to Dayton, but Dayton doesn't allow Uber. Or I'm driving out in an unincorporated area of Salem, you know, this side of Lancaster is the county, this side is Salem, I don't know, they call, how would this be, how would this be addressed?
I don't know the answer to that. And I also don't know how much information Uber can transfer to us that we can then incorporate into the model, or what has been done in other metropolitan areas. I'm just not familiar with what data, I'm still thinking the scientific thing, what data are available, and how you can draw that and get reasonable conclusions with a traffic engineering perspective. Again, I think you get some anecdotal information, and possibly trends, or look at what other cities have done, as best I can. Kind of long-winded answer to something I'm not entirely sure I've got there.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Robert.
Great. Thank you, Robert, for that answer. No, that was really good. I got it clear as mud. No, it's hard to figure out, I see the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, one for the city attorney and one for the chief, since he's been here all night. The first one, Dan, I read this through, and maybe I didn't go into great detail, but I'm interested with the DUIs. What about a diversion? Is there, because, you know, a diversion, that doesn't mean you weren't driving while you were under the influence of alcohol, it just means that if you do certain things within a year, it gets wiped off from your record. So, is there any looking at diversions, and how do they fit in under this?
Dan Atchison, City Attorney. So, my understanding is that they search seven years back for convictions.
Okay. So, is a conviction followed by a diversion, you plead guilty. So, you think that would show up on the?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, okay. Then, Chief, one of the main concerns that we've expressed all throughout this is the safety of the public. And a lot of that related to the background checks and the kind of people who were driving, and, you know, we've gone from, we've all seen the comparisons, so I just want to make sure that the police department is satisfied that with the proposed statute, that will protect the safety of the public.
Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. Thank you, Counselor. There are differences in our backgrounds, there's no doubt. We have access to information they may not have, but I think the company uses, a reputable company that probably does a very fine job for them. Our criteria is a little different, but quite frankly, our criteria was created years ago just so we were fair to everybody. We created a criteria that somebody could look at and say, well, I either qualify or I don't qualify, or if we got information, we could either prove someone or disqualify them. I think it's, I don't want to turn this around, but I think it's really up to you whether you think the backgrounds that, that transportation companies complete through third parties are what you would be comfortable with your community.
Let me ask the question a different way then. I presume that you, as the Chief of Police, have had discussions with the city attorney and the city manager and others about, in helping draft the ordinance?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thanks.
Any further, yeah, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, just to follow up, Chief, I, maybe I'll put the question this way. If Uber were in Salem, would you have any personal concern about using it?
I don't think so.
That was our ringing. Yes.
Just because we have people here, and I'm assuming we're getting ready to close this down.
Yes, we are.
As far as the, the process of the ordinance and when it would be in effect, and those kind of issues, just so people understand, if, if this were to pass this evening, what does that do?
So, at, if council moves to, you know, move the ordinance to second reading, you get this point, this would be the point in time, if you had any proposed amendments that you could add, we'd engross the ordinance and bring it back. It would conceivably be back on May 8th, your next meeting. Typically, ordinances take effect within 30 days, so it'd be effective June 8th, June 7th, unless there was an emergency clause, then it'd be effective immediately.
Anything else? Counselor Cook.
I just wanted to say that I think that the sharing economy is something that's here to stay, and it is robust, but I really want to caution an overreliance on one tool to solve the complex issue, and to also be mindful of unintended consequences of this, specifically with more single occupancy vehicle traffic, greater wear and tear on our roads, air quality standards and the like, and just even if we're... And just even if we're watching for those things, because if they're happening, it's important that we're able to, to measure that accordingly.
Yeah.
And that we're being data-driven.
Certainly our experience with chariots, as one of our single operators has indicated part of that. And, you know, the other thing, it's kind of fortunate we'll have two people in each of these cars at least, so. They'll qualify for the carpool, I guess.
That is certainly one way to look at it.
Okay, we want to move forward on this then. I'm going to move that we advance, I, how do I get these amendments in?
To advance your second meeting, if the amendment says as attached.
Okay. I'm going to move this ordinance bill number 317 with the amendments you find in your attachment, plus the amendment we discussed on sex offenders for second reading.
Second. Oh, Nanki can have it.
Your second?
Yeah, I second unless I yield to the gentleman from the third ward.
Cook second. Any discussion? Counselor Lewis.
The amendments are not part of the proposed ordinance, so...
They will be engrossed into it, and you will see a final copy in advance of your next meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that anything new that goes into this ordinance has also been reviewed by the people who have spoken here tonight, or do they need a chance to look at these amendments and chime in?
Process-wise, what we would do is take the draft amendments that are included in your staff report, you've provided engrossed ordinance. We can make it available on the website and folks can review it. I don't know when that would be ready, probably by the end of the week. So that would give folks about a week to look at it before the second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't even know if they are.
They're primarily kind of Scrivener issues. They're sort of definitely not, not anything substantive.
Do you want me to do it somewhere else?
Yeah, why don't you? Thanks.
These were proposed amendments that the mayor asked us to attach to the staff report. Most of it is just kind of housekeeping stuff. If I can flip through this quickly, there is a slight change to the audit section where it just, it sort of clarifies that the audit is for the purpose of reviewing the company's compliance with the city's regulations. It doesn't look like the red line version made it into my copy of the edition, so I'm a little struggling to remember what exactly they were, but I reviewed them. Most of them are fairly inconsequential, and we'll provide a supplemental report that details them.
My intention is the most substantive is that question on sex offenders, and I'm just following what Uber representative, Mr. Isaac, said as their approach on this. That's just to get that in and get it very, very clear. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I have to say I came in tonight feeling sort of like the man who says, the old man who says, "You kids get off my lawn." And also kind of like the horse and buggy advocate who would say, "Pay no attention to that Model T over there." But I've been impressed by the testimony here, and I particularly appreciated what Mr. Lynch had to say. You know, it's a new age, and we may disagree with some of the corporate policies of the number-one company we've been talking about today, and we may see some potential problems down the line, but this is the future, folks, and we need to be with it. The only caution I have is this is not a substitute for mass transit. And we still are going to have to work on that.
So true.
Counselor Hoy.
I would just like to say, full disclosure, I've used Uber and Lyft about seven or eight times in the past 30 days in various cities in other states, and spent most of that time actually, I'll say, questioning the drivers about their experiences with the companies, and it's all been positive. And I don't see a downside to this. I agree with Counselor Anderson. This has nothing to do with mass transit in terms of the bus service. We need to double down on our commitment to improving that, and I'm going to support this.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kazer.
I just wanted to add really quick that this ordinance is not just about any one company. It's to allow a type of business to operate in Salem. And even though in the paper and blogs, it's all Uber, 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 it's really not about Uber. It's about the type of company. And I know a lot of people in my ward support the business operated in Salem, and I was really appreciative of Mr. Lynch's comments that, you know, my hope is that we get something local going, because, you know, frankly, Uber's a national company. I'd way rather support local companies.
Well, thank you. I want to say this is something I've been very interested in as a member of the council, and I appreciate the comments and appreciate the patience of the council working through this issue, these kinds of issues where you make this kind of change. I think the horse and buggy analogy, while, you know, is fun, there is a certain amount of truth to these kinds of changes as we work our way through them. So I really appreciate being open to this new technology and look forward to looking at it in the near future and the far future to make sure all of the concerns that we have are being met. So thank you very much. With that, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Information reports we've had, first reading.
We've got a poll still.
Well, I got your poll, I'm sorry. I first want. I was going to have you make a motion on that second reading, so I'll do your polling instead.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Anderson, okay. Counselor Hoy.
So I asked for this to be polled, not because of any concerns with any of the people that we're potentially going to appoint, but I have a bigger concern with the lack of representation from Ward 6. And it's been an ongoing concern, and I really, I spend my time when I'm at neighborhood association meetings talking about the boards and commissions and the importance of getting representation from all over the city onto the boards and commissions. And I really hope that we will do, and this isn't a criticism at all, but I really hope that we will take an affirmative step to outreach to the entire city to get representation from throughout.
Great, thank you. Yes, Counselor Nick.
And now that we have someone sitting in that position that can help, you know, it's our job as well as counselors to go out and beat the streets and try to get people to apply for things, because why, it's somewhat better, over the last couple of, you know, decades that I've been involved with neighborhoods and city stuff, it's like pulling teeth sometimes to get people just to apply, much less get people to apply that have some qualifications for the particular committee or commission, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
We'll be relying heavily on you.
And I think for all of us, we'd be more than happy to assist in trying to find, we all know people in different wards and can help, so I think it's really, what you're saying is really well-taken. Okay, could we, all in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Now first reading.
Ordinance Bill number 617, an ordinance relating to nonprofit shelters for victims of domestic violence in the R.A.R.S.R.D.R.M.I. 1, R.M. 2, R.H.C.N.C.O.C.R.C.G.C.B. and I.C. Zone, amending SRC 510.005, 510.010, 511.005, 511.010, 512.010, 512.015, 513.005, 514.005, 515.005, 520.005, 521.005, 522.005, 523.005, 524.005, 525.005, 526.005, 527.005, 528.005, 529.005, and 806.015.
Excellent. Counselor McCoy.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes, and second reading.
All right. And it's ordinance bill number 817, an ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way located south of Almsville Highway Southeast and east of Kubler Boulevard Southeast. Counselor Lewis? Okay, thank you. Counselor Kazer?
Ayes.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
He'll be right back.
Oh, okay. Counselor Hoy?
Excuse me, aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Wait, just, go stand down for just a second. Hope you didn't...
Okay.
Say aye.
So, Counselor Osik.
Now, we have public comment on anything other than agenda items. Anyone here to comment on anything? Okay, then we are adjourned.